... One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mayor Candelaure?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Whitworth?
Here.
Counselor Angeloni?
Here.
Counselor Caprio?
Here.
Counselor Diamond?
Here.
Counselor Fawnin?
Here.
Counselor Fucy?
Here.
Counselor Hodgson?
Here.
Counselor Rose?
Here.
May I have a motion to approve the August 12th, 2014 WPCA Town Council?
Second with the following corrections on page three, item 11A. I don't think I made the motion to appoint myself to pardon rec. I'm not sure who did.
Actually, I have noted it was Counselor Fucy.
Okay. And then on page six, under the comments for when we voted on the floor plans, when residents got up to speak, it should be Sherry DelGaudio, not Shelley DelGaudio. That's all I have.
Roll call.
Mayor Candelaure?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Whitworth?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Caprio?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Fucy?
Yes.
Counselor Hodgson?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Water Pollution Control Authority Agenda, item three, correspondence, citizen statements. Item four, unfinished business. Item five, new business. Item A, Sewer Works Operation Budget Fiscal Year 2014-2015.
Good evening. Included on your desk is a, basically a hot off the press, proposed Sewer Works operating fund budget. We just actually received some of our last information today, so we had to, we put this together, finalize it rather quickly, just to get it before you. Basically, in a nutshell, the biggest components of the sewer use budget are intermunicipal costs, what we pay to the Greater North Haven WPCA, the town of Branford, and the town of North Haven where we discharge to. And those fluctuate up and down a little bit, our flows are based upon dry season or wet, you know, a wet year and the like. Generally, we do a little better on a wet year because we have less infiltration or leakage in the system than some of the other towns. We had a little drier system in the past, so they went up a little bit, the intermunicipal costs overall. Some went up, some went down a little bit. The other thing to point out is our sewer operations contract, or Viola Water, we went out for an RFP recently for them. They submitted a proposal to us, and basically their proposal pretty much maintained the existing rate we had with a slight cost of living, I think about a 2% cost of living for the next four years, with provisions to extend that contract beyond that. In a nutshell, cost went up a little bit in some areas and down some others. What we're anticipating is that we can maintain the current sewer use fee of $375 per unit, which we have for the past couple of years. We can continue to maintain that for this year. Our fund balance goes up and down a little bit, but basically we're trying to maintain a stable sewer use fee. So this is before you, just, this is information at this point. We'll look at it and see if, just make sure everything is correct. Like I said, we just printed it this afternoon to get it before you at this point in time. At the next meeting, we have a public hearing scheduled on the proposed rate, and we will advertise that rate at $375 per unit, same as we have the past couple of years at this point. And if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, but again, the good news is we're looking at pretty much a stable rate for the past few years and hopefully the next year after that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Kurt. Any questions? Okay. Item B, White Hollow Sewer Deferred Payments.
Again, this item appears annually ever since we did the White Hollow Sewer Project. This is basically, just allows for deferral payments until these properties transfer. There's no loss of, ultimate loss of revenue, but it's just a deferral of the assessment for these particular properties that met income guidelines. The number started out, there's probably 10 or 12 originally when the White Hollow Sewer Project went into effect. There's only, we're down to two at this point. And this is an annual thing, just to approve the deferrals as listed on your sheets.
So they just want to wait to pay it till after they sell their house and it comes out of their proceeds?
Okay.
Mayor, I think the motion to approve the sewer deferral payment for the following addresses, 52rd Street, Trail Drive, Northford, and 47th Avenue. Second.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Whitworth, seconded by Counselor Angeloni. Roll call.
Mayor Candelaure?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Whitworth?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Caprio?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Fucy?
Yes.
Counselor Hodgson?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Item six, citizen statements and petitions. Regular Town Council meeting. Item seven, reports of committees, boards, and commissions. Item A, Economic Development Commission.
Yeah, the commission's going to meet on Monday, September 8th. Alan Platus has been traveling, he's been on the road. I hope to speak with him tomorrow in anticipation of Monday's meeting, which will bring to the table the conceptual type of concepts of development that he's talking about. And the group is anxious and moving forward, so I'll have to report back on the 16th of a very lively discussion on Monday's meeting.
Michael, I received in the mail, I'm looking for it now, it looks like an RFP was put together for the property to be appraised, appraisal?
We had, the group had talked about a draft. Right. We had gone so far as to put a draft together, put it on hold, based on some of the conversation from the last meeting about potentially doing it locally with the help of a Realtor or developer locally, to try to spare some costs in terms of getting to a number, rather than putting the full-blown RFP out, spending money to do that. Not necessarily, the group said, whether we need to know that number right away or right now, there might be another way to get that number using some local resources. We're going to try that route before we issue the RFP. It's still in a, you know, working document.
Okay. I saw something in there, like, related to Bridgeport. Was that just kind of a?
Boilerplate to look at, yeah. Yeah, that was just sort of the model to go at and look at. And then, again, with Bert Sacco coming to the meeting as well, he added some valuable input to that, and kind of guided us to the fact that we might want to wait and look at a local option first, before going and sending out an RFP.
Thank you. Item B, Permanent Project Building Committee.
Our next committee meeting is next Monday, the 8th.
Board of Education, Town Council, Communication Subcommittee. I believe with the summer schedule, we'll probably be resuming that pretty soon.
The next meeting is scheduled for Monday.
Monday?
Yep.
Okay. Update on school projects, Mr. Bill Jody. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, sir. How are you all doing tonight?
Good, how are you?
To go as briefly as I can, the vents project that the board was doing is complete. All the vents are on the roof, all the vents are operational. As far as we know, the completion of the roof is hinging on two items. One is some overflow drains that need to be installed. They were there today. I don't know if they were all put in today, but they may have been completed. And we're also looking for the downspouts for the canopy out front. That was discussed at the Permanent Project Building Committee, and there was a change order that came in for that. And also, the final thing was just a ladder to, a code compliant ladder, to get up onto the small gym or the wellness center roof. The track, we finally got the second price from the other outfit that was also on the CREC list, and their number was approximately $98,000. So we're looking at one that's 98 plus.
Eighty-nine?
Oh, eighty-nine thousand, eighty-nine thousand plus change. And the first one was 92 and change. So we were anticipating that the numbers were going to be pretty close together, because it was a unit pricing through CREC. So those are the two numbers, and now we're just awaiting direction when we can get started.
How long will this track last that it's resurfaced?
They are claiming that we can get 10 years out of the new track surface.
What do we get out of the old track surface?
You got, the last track painting that we did, you got five years out of the track itself, and you got four years out of the striping. Now, they're telling me that they'll probably have to re-stripe every five years. That's just something that wears out. But the track surface itself and the subsurface should last at least 10 years.
Is that written into their contract?
They're going to give you a, I believe their standard is a one-year warranty on materials and workmanship, but this is what they're claiming.
One of them has a three-year warranty.
Which one, the one for 92 or the one for 89?
Eighty-nine.
Yeah.
When I ran on it, it was like gravel from Tilkun, the little tiny ones. I'm serious.
And the scope of work for both companies, are they the same?
Uh, yes, yes, yes. It was repair of the track subsurface. It was repair of any holes or cracks in the track. Then it was painting the track with a urethane finish, and then it was re-striping to our specifications. So everybody's looking at apples and apples.
So in '08, when it was done, they didn't repair the surface?
They did not do any repairs to the surface of the track. The only thing they painted it with was a latex product that had that five-year lifespan on it.
So they overlaid the surface on it and then stripped it?
Right.
Okay, but this time they're?
They were doing subsurface.
There was no subsurface. At the time, it didn't need it.
So this one, they're doing subsurface? On this track repair, are they doing subsurface repair?
Yes, yes, yes. They have to, they have to repair portions of the mat. It's actually a mat over the top of the tubular surface, and they have to repair that. That's where your cracks are. They're in that.
Right, and you're not supposed to walk on that with cleats or anything?
Uh, no, you're not, no, you're not.
And it always, that doesn't work out.
You know, bicycles, skateboards, anything like that, that's a no-no.
So what's their timeframe once they get the go-ahead?
Well, one of the companies was looking at a window of opportunity. They could have started this week on it, but because we were not able to say yes or no, and we were still waiting for that second number, we had to, you know, say, we'll let you know. So what we're looking at now is the athletic department's football schedule, to look, to find a place where we can get two weeks or three weeks of either away games or a bye week or something like that, and hopefully we can, we can work it in.
Okay, so if you can't, if you can't get it done this fall because of sports schedules, is their quote still good if you did it in the spring?
That I would have to ask them, I'm not sure. Probably yes, but you always ask first, you know, just to make sure. They're telling me it's a week to a week and a half, maybe two-week project for them, and they can do it while school is in session. So if we can find a way to keep people off the track surface, they can still play on the field, but they can't play on the track surface, because once the track is painted, that portion is done, then you've got to bring in the strippers. Strippers take more time than the repair or the overlay.
This one also says price good for 2015. So we have to defer all of that.
Yeah. But, I mean, they knew the time of year we were coming in, you know, and depending on, you know, weather conditions and our conditions, as to whether or not they could get in there.
Got any updates on the auditorium or the intermediate school, or it's still the same issues?
Well, the auditorium, we have engaged the services of Nafis and Young. They've come over to look at the possibilities of some drains in the front of the school. What we found, the last large storm that we had, we tracked the infiltration of the water, and it was from the, the rain was coming from east to west. We had infiltration of water from the front doors underneath the floor, and we were able to track it because we have tiles that we have removed, and we're able to see the subfloor or the slab. So we tracked that, Nafis and Young came down. What they're going to do is put some options together for the Permanent Project Building Committee and report to them on Monday.
Intermediate school?
Intermediate school. We're tracking the roof leaks over there. Some have been repaired, some are new, some are old. So that's, that school is almost, every time it rains, something new pops up with that place.
Yeah, $36 million palace.
So, there's, you know, we keep, we keep digging into it. We've had Eagle Roofing, they've been up there, they've, they fixed, there was, I think there was 18 leaks, but we are still persistently getting water infiltration through the air conditioning units on the roof. So we're getting water.
So between the air conditioning people and the roofing people who did this job, there's nothing, we can't hold them liable for anything?
Right now, you're an awful long way into the program. You're way past.
So it's been leaking from day one?
Yes, it has.
Right.
That would be, but that would be a permanent project, Town Council, you know, issue to, you know, to speak to their constructors and their vendors and, you know, find out what the story is. But we battle them on our end, and it's mostly a maintenance type of issue.
See what's going on and what, who did the work and what we can do. Talk to John or whatever.
At the last Board of Ed Budget Subcommittee meeting, the issue of the roof was brought up, and the point that was brought up on the Board of Ed side was because of the snow removals on the roof and having people up there, and there was things done to, you know, they went down to the roof's surface in some areas, based on who did it, and so they felt that we might have voided the warranty.
Now, the stuff, if water coming into the air conditioning system, maybe that might be different.
And the final thing I want to report on is the restroom issue over at the high school. We have engaged Nafis and Young to put together a design for the bathrooms that will make them handicap accessible. They met with me, we did a complete walkthrough of the school, we looked at all the spaces to see what was possible there. They then went down to the building department, spoke to Tom, to find out what he was looking for in a design. So their task and their scope of work is going to be to document what's there and then design something new, and then put the specifications together so that we can either bid the whole job or bid parts of the job. So we're looking at floors, painting of walls, drop ceilings, and new fixtures and partitions. So if, if all of this comes together, we should have a number for each bathroom, so we know how far we can go.
The plan is to make, build, park, and unlock two bathrooms fully ADA compliant.
Uh, it looks like we're going to.
The remainder would be handicap.
Handicap accessible. It looks like we have the potential to do two, because we have the space. Again, the ADA component of this is the floor square footage, and in many of them, we don't have exactly the amount of petition to wall space or petition to sink space, but we're very, very close, so we're good. We're over three feet, we know we can get a wheelchair through there, but we do have two bathrooms that have the potential to be exactly an ADA compliant bathroom. So that's what we're hoping for.
Good. How did the high school repair with the rain? How was that?
I'm happy to report we have had two rain events. Both of them, the envelope remained intact and the building remained dry.
Great.
So we're as tickled pink as could be. We're very, very happy.
Great.
Something's not leaking, right?
On the auditorium?
Yeah.
Probably a couple of years ago, the theory was that it was groundwater coming up underneath the floor, which actually, I've got to tell you, it doesn't make much sense, but.
We still have not.
It makes a lot more sense.
We still have not completely proven that it's not groundwater, because right now conditions at the site.
It's so dry.
We can't see it. You know, we're kind of waiting for that water to pop up through the parking lot. Again, when we see that water, we're going to know for sure whether it's groundwater. But it doesn't appear to be that way. It appears to be mostly infiltration.
It makes a lot more sense that it would be coming through the doors.
Yeah.
You know, just, just the way that school was built, it, you know, that floor actually, it wasn't like there was a cut there when they built it, you know? It was actually tilted up a little bit from the grade, so I would hope that it's the doors.
They're looking at, right now, some of the options we talked about was a sidewalk drain across the front. They were also looking at possibly changing the pitch of the sidewalk itself. Right now, it's raised, and it's actually slightly into the building, there's a very slight grade there, and because it was multiple cores, every one is not perfect. So you've got one that maybe is, you know, a little bit positive, maybe a quarter inch positive, you've got another one that's in a hole. So it appears to be, the doors on the right-hand side, if you look in front of there, there's a little bit of a dish, and that appears to be where the water is coming through, from that area over there. So it's all zero grade, in fact, when you go into the building, the slab is less than zero, it's below grade. So we're thinking that, you know, between the storefront membrane, not knowing how that was installed, there doesn't appear to be a shelf that it's sitting on, it's right down at ground level, and it's got a cut in front of it, so the water wants to go into the cut. So it would actually fill that up, and the doors being zero grade. So we're waiting to see what Nafis and Young comes up with. They may have a better mousetrap, we don't know. Anything else?
Just one quick thing. On the right side of the auditorium, those gutters coming down?
Yep.
Were those ever cleaned and got functioning?
Yes, yes. Yeah, that was, in fact, that was one of the first things that we had done. We started looking at that gutter system. We actually dug it back to the building. We found some very old cracked pipe that was probably originally thrown in there because there was pieces of concrete that were on top of the, on top of the pipe, and the pipe was broken. We replaced all of that, and knock on wood, the, that corner of the building over with, that's where the.
Automotive.
Where the music room would be, the band room. We were getting water into the band room floor, and we haven't seen that. So we're thinking that maybe, maybe that cured it, yes.
Right, good.
Mike, in order to move the track project along, now, the Town Council has given that to the Board of Ed, so that, they're managing that project, but the costs are above what's in our capital budget. So is the process that they would have to accept one of the bids, and then whatever bid they accept come back to the council to ask for more money to complete the project?
Yeah, that's the way I understand it, because you're going to have to meet the gap.
We would, we would.
I just want.
Ask the board to authorize the project and engine on an additional funding source beyond the capital. Capital is?
Sixty-five.
Sixty-five.
And is there any way that they could move the project along? Because between their board meeting and then our council meeting coming back, they would lose that opportunity. So is there some way that they can get it, if they can schedule the person in for the fall?
Does the football start next week? Right?
Yeah.
When is your, when is your next meeting?
Probably next week.
Rumors say 18th.
18th?
Next Thursday is their next meeting. So it's, so it's after our council meeting.
What's the temperature where, the barrier where they can't do this work?
They were talking 60 during the day.
60 during the day?
Correct.
Okay.
It's, it's a pretty standard urethane product, so anything below 60 is kind of pushing it.
So it probably ends November 1st. Yeah, you'd probably be close to, if they're looking for a couple of weeks of it.
This week probably would have been too hot.
Yeah, right.
Getting back to the leaking roof at the intermediate school, or whatever it's called now, the, I know they had some kind of a guarantee which was on the product itself.
Yeah, it was on the membrane of Firestone, or good.
Right, but that's really just on the material, and that was like 20 years.
Right.
Yes.
And I remember that the contractor had a tough time getting them to give him that because the way it installed it originally.
Right.
But, so after that, I mean, we all know that it's leaked, like I said, from day one. So that would be up to us to decide whether we needed to take action against either the contractor, the architect, or somebody there, or who was that now?
Right now, it's my understanding that Greenwood is still the holder of the warranty repairs, so if there was something that was a warranty repair, it would be Greenwood who would come back and do it. But in the past three years, they've been basically ineffective in stopping the leaks, so we felt it was in our best interest to try our vendor and bring them in, because that's all they do is that type of work, you know, find leaks. And they were successful with some, and some we just cannot stop, and right now.
Do you think it's all the air conditioning units or not?
Right. The main leaks are in the, in the office, which we started out with, and also in D-Wing, which was the old section of the old building, that two-story structure. There's so much stuff on the roof, there's so many penetrations in those two areas up there, that it could be either or. We have opened them up after rainstorms, and we found the trays full of water, so we know something is going into the air ducts and in through the units, but we also know that there are some regular roof leaks, you know, seams and things like that. So, I mean, everybody who goes up there, after they walk around, they actually, they find things, they continually find leaks. So it's, it's like we're not, we're, we get better and we get worse, we get better and we get worse. So the ones in the main office, we've gone almost a year with nothing leaking in the main office, and then all of a sudden that started leaking again. So we're not sure if it was something that got plugged up and then washed out with the heavy rain, or what the story was. But, I mean, we've had, we had roofing consultants up there, they walked around, we've had Firestone up there, they walked around, we've had Greenwood up there, and we had, Turner was up there, and our final hope was Eagle Roofing, that Eagle Rivet, that they could do something for us, so.
Where they put these units? It's like a hip wall, and then all these units are trapped in like this area, so I could see where water would build up in that area, you know, right on top.
Is it cooling up and coming over the curb, or is that what it's doing?
Well, it's not, it's not really a curb. What happened was they raised all the air conditioning units. When they did that, they put exposed ductwork underneath them, and then they put a penetration. So, if you've got a fifty-ton unit, I mean, the penetration for that is probably four by four. It's just a big hole in the roof, and it can find its way in. And when the units run, I mean, there is a low, there's a low-level vibration that comes from it, you know, and your compressors are running. So, everything is moving, you know, and if there wasn't a leak, it might cause a leak.
And that membrane is so thin.
But, but again, going back to when, when we went there, and I called them out on the windows being installed wrong, which the guy had the big argument and then had to admit they were. We went up on the roof, and that roof was a horrendous job. And I mean, you know, we got screwed by Turner and was it Newman? I mean, we just got screwed. And the only good thing I got out of it was when Guilford was looking at those contractors, I called over there and told everybody I knew, "Don't use them." So, but we're stuck with this thing. And I'm gonna say this again, I've been preaching it for twenty-five years. We have to go with a high-sloped roof on all buildings. These flat roofs are designed to leak. And I don't know what we can do. You save a few dollars upfront, and now we have a thirty-five million dollar school that we're gonna be looking at funding putting a new roof on it. In what, five years, ten years?
If you go up and look the way the roof is designed, that was during the period that the state was mandating a half-inch pitch. So, everything drains to the center, and when we get a three-inch rain, can you imagine what's coming down to those drains? It's unbelievable. And it's moving. I mean, it's with velocity and, you know, showing up.
And that membrane is so thin.
If it was one-hundred percent intact, the thing that scares me is sending people up there.
Right.
The more traffic we put up there, the more trouble we're causing.
So, sorry, but I'm gonna ask Don. So, Don, are we beating a dead horse trying to do something legally?
I mean, my recollection, and I'm not sure I'm right because I wasn't in the room, but I thought the project building committee had pursued the possibility of, you know, going after the contractors and doing something, because the roof was something that, as you said, that's been a problem for, for most of its life. And, but I don't know what the conclusion was, but I thought that basically there was an agreement that, you know, there was nothing else we could do along that line. Maybe somebody who was there has more recollection, maybe I could, you know, I don't know, there's notes or-
But we don't wanna spend good money after bad. That's, you know, that's stupid.
Al, I think what it was too, there were so many people involved, subcontractors and contractors, that-
And we released Turner.
And we were the clerk, we were the clerk of the work on that job. So, I don't know.
I gotta get into commercial construction, man. I build, I build houses half that big. And believe me, if they leak fifteen years later, I get called and go fix it, you know? It's like, I don't know, but. All right, well, I mean, I guess we have to know when it's, when we have to, we can't sit there and let it leak, so.
I mean, there was patches from day one when it was new.
We need to come up with a plan on fixing it.
All right. Any other questions?
Okay, 'cause I know we didn't completely answer their question in regards to the track. They need to know how to move forward with that. So, your Board of Ed meeting is after our next council meeting. But do you think you can get some information in regards to like possible dates that you're looking at so that we could have it at the next council meeting? So, if there's anything we can do prior to your board meeting-
Board meeting.
On Thursday, on that Thursday, just so that we can move it along. If there, if the window of opportunity arises that we can do it now in the fall, and it's in between meetings, we need to know that.
Now, one secondary question, the prices are, I mean, one is a couple thousand dollars less than the other. Would, should we pursue both of them in terms of scheduling? Like, let's say, for example, the one at ninety-two can do the work this fall, but the one at eighty-nine can't.
That's only one year, the one at ninety-two guarantee, right, warranty? The one at ninety-two thousand is one-year warranty?
That one, it wasn't specified. So, I mean, there's some more questions we have to ask.
Right, 'cause a three-year warranty for less money would make a lot more sense, I would think. Not that the warranties mean anything, but you never know.
Yeah, I'm surprised they would have a different warranty because this is supposed to be basically a standard proposal. I'm not surprised that there's some difference in the numbers because when you're doing something that large, I mean, it could be, you know, the square footage that they thought needed to be repaired, and it could even be something, just the base measurements themselves could cause a little bit of a variation. But, you know, we can ask all those questions.
Okay, so if you can just have some answers for our next council meeting?
Bill, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Don, thank you.
I apologize for being late, but I was-
That's okay.
We were here at an important time, seeing your face.
Yeah. And I didn't, you didn't have to come up to the microphone. And you didn't have to come up to the microphone. All right. Town managers' report. Item A, Secretary One, Building Engineering, Planning and Zoning.
Yep, a quick update there. As I think I mentioned, we've got a great candidate in Lynn Walzak, who has nearly thirty, more than thirty years of municipal experience in the building department. She had just recently moved to a planning department within the same city. She was a top candidate, and is ready, scheduled, accepted, and will start on September eighth, Monday.
What was her name? I'm sorry, I didn't hear the first name.
Lynn Walzak. And doesn't hurt that, I think, also to note, she's a local resident.
Oh, good.
That's good.
And then the secondary item there, B, on the CEO position, I'm talking with Carrie and our new planner about the process and looking at CASIO, which is a state organization as well, in terms of trying to figure out that process. And still trying to get help from our retired CEO, Bud Dekia, in terms of his knowledge and memory in terms of some of the issues we're dealing with. So, he's agreed to help us with a phone call or two. He's available. Try to, you know, piece together some of these things we're working on. So, that's an evolving process, and I'll keep you posted on that, see what we get.
Thank you. Item C, Steve Grant.
Yeah, that's just a notification that the, came out that the next round is open with applications due for November eighth. I'm suggesting, recommending we repackage the one that was denied, which was the tennis courts that we did last time, last round. Unless there are any objections, I would put that back together and send it back in for another try.
That was on the tennis court?
Right.
And is that, is that, are we looking for a, like a complete rebuild on that?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, half a million dollar application for total rebuild.
So, that was, that was on all three courses, tennis courts, sorry, Memorial?
Like Memorial was the emphasis, starting there, and then-
Northford Park?
No, it was-
Stanley T.?
Stanley T. and Northford Park.
But I think in this, and the numbers are such that I think you're probably gonna get Memorial and potentially Stanley T. if we look at the numbers really. And I'm not even sure we can get that, but that's where I'm gonna go through the process, talk to Fran, talk to Pam, and look at that, revisit that, and repackage it, and bring it back for the next meeting.
Okay.
Or meeting in October before the November deadline.
Are you gonna send a copy to our state ref and our senator to?
Absolutely, yep. Yeah, they've been very helpful in submitting their, they attach their letters of support that goes in, which is very helpful.
All right, thank you, Mike. Item D, self-insurance update and next step.
Yeah, just, you know, that's something that's come up, and I know the council wants to know where we are with that. The process is such that, you know, I talked with Dave from H.D. Seeger, Matthews from H.D. Seeger, and December is the timeframe that we get the quote in terms of starting that process. And he had said that that's typically December where we engage in the process and would start the self-insured process at that point. Get a quote first, and then begin to go through the process.
So, that would be what you'd do if you wanted to stay with that group? Is that correct? And if we wanted to hear from groups that wanted to do this in September for us, wouldn't we wanna be talking to them now?
Well, I think you try to get the quote from the in-house first, right? I mean, in terms of looking there, and then through this process, look at others if necessary. But I think we're looking at staying, because to my understanding, it is a funding mechanism, by how you fund it, not changing the-
Right, but the group, this H.D. Seeger or whatever, he gets a fee for doing it. So, I know that you, talking to Anthony and Don some, I know that, so, these guys get a fee. There's a few companies that do it. So, you know, if we wait till December for it, we have a habit of doing everything in the eleventh hour. And we need to know what we're doing before we finish the budget in April. So, why wouldn't we at least hear from Don and Anthony? And they could either talk us into saying, you know, "We use this guy for so many years." I mean, everybody knows in their own home, they ought to check their insurance quotes every three to five years. Some people say every two years. So, I need to know that, I mean, I know we've been with this outfit for a few years now. So, is it time to look to somebody else, especially where we're looking at a different mechanism for this? And we don't wanna start looking to somebody else in December?
I think you're confusing the issues. Dave is an independent person, so in the past-
So, who's he worked for? How do we pay him?
We pay him a straight fee, not part of commissions. We changed that philosophy probably about seven to ten years ago. We took it out of commissions.
All right, so we pay him. Who else could run it, and how would we pay them?
Well, we did an RFP, and his company responded, along probably with half dozen others. And a selection committee was made, myself, Don, I believe, it might've been Bonnie at the time. And we went with him. He has a low fee, he's very responsive, does good work for us. He has priced our insurance to other carriers before, Cigna, Edna, things like that. The problem that you have is that if you go to the well thirty-seven times and say, "Hey, we wanna price out town of North Branford," and never make the move, they're gonna laugh at you. That's been our history. We've made, you know, numerous attempts to get prices from Cigna and other players, and the margin's been very minimal.
So, I'm not looking to change who it is. I'm looking at this guy that, I wanna hear from you guys. When did we bring him on? This guy's like our middleman.
Correct.
And it's a fixed fee or whatever.
Correct.
And what is that fee?
Twenty thousand a year.
Okay, so-
Just as a note, though, the year we switched to that mentality, we were supposed to pay a hundred thousand dollars when it was baked into our Anthem premiums.
So, these are things that we need to hear.
He does a good job, of course.
So, how many years have we had him, and you guys are both still happy with him?
Correct, I am.
Okay.
Well, now, the thing is, Al, I'm not sure, you know, in terms of self-insurance, that could be a little bit of a different, you know, a different animal.
A different fee structure or a different-
Well, I don't know. I'm not sure how they do that. And so, it seems like the first step might be a conversation with them just to find out, you know, what our options are. But that doesn't necessarily preclude us from, you know, getting a private investment.
See, if you guys are comfortable with this guy, that's fine, but we don't know that. So, you've got that, you know, point across. What I'm saying is, you know, I listened there, and I was a proponent twenty years ago of going self-insured. So, and after listening to them, you know, the last time they were in here, I can't see any reason that we're not gonna go that way if we're able to.
Right. There's numerous benefits, you're a hundred percent correct.
Especially with the-
As the Affordable Care Act taxes go up and-
Affordable Care Act.
Right, there's many things pointing us that direction. So, I think it's a matter, I think, as the manager was explaining, basically, come December, every year we get a renewal quote from Anthem. We get, currently under the fully insured model. And the game plan is, at that point, get the quote under the fully insured model, also ask them for a quote under the self-insured model, to get, with the actual difference.
But you've gotta look at the tax.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
Because if I heard him right, if I remember this right, we were paying, we're paying five million a year for insurance. And some of the years, we paid out, they paid out four million, and some years, like most of the years, if you did the math over the last five years, 'cause I did it, we were like one-point-seven million ahead.
Right.
That, and then in two thousand eighteen, then I'm rounding it off. It's like a twenty percent tax with the Affordable Health Care that's not a tax if you're self-insured. They'll probably change it, 'cause it seems like that's a loophole. But, so that's, so that's a million dollars on five million dollars, so we're gonna save that.
The Cadillac tax is, are you talking about the Cadillac tax or?
Right.
The Cadillac tax is a forty percent excise tax. However, it's only on single plans that are greater than ten thousand two hundred dollars or family plans, which is also a two, that are twenty-seven thousand two hundred dollars. It's only what's above that level-
Is what's taxed on?
-the forty percent tax.
Okay.
We're not above that level, I hope.
We're close to that level, right?
We're close to that level? We are, okay. There's a way, there's a way to, there's a way to get around this. What you can do is take a plan that gives out a little less benefits. Then you take out a supplemental plan with those benefits that you took out. And they can't tax you on that because it's a separate plan. So, neither one of them is a Cadillac plan, so you could still have the same coverage, okay? But you have the main plan and the supplemental plan, and you don't pay the tax on that. I just found that out yesterday.
Well, anyway, guys, I mean, so, so we've made our point. We don't wanna get to December and be like, "Oh, we can't do it again this year, 'cause we didn't start early enough."
That's, we're targeting next July first for a couple of changes.
Okay. Thank you.
I just wanted to add that at some point early on, all the labor contracts should be looked at. It is very common for labor contracts to have change of insurance carrier language, including going from fully insured to self-insured. That gives them the right, if they don't, you know, the typical language is you can change insurance companies as long as the benefits are substantially equivalent. Sometimes they say comparable, which has no legal meaning to me anyway. But it's the, it's the language that is commonly used that I'm concerned about for the town, and that would be, you know, substantially equal or equivalent. Because what can then happen, particularly if you lessen the benefits, that would be a problem there. They'll file a grievance. And again, the contract language may even say that you can't implement the new insurance until the matter is settled or an arbitration award comes out, so.
We've been targeting all along is no change in the actual benefits, just as Mike mentioned, the funding policy would be self-insured versus fully insured?
That, I understand, well, I understand that, but some, but some contracts also say going from fully insured to self-insured constitutes a change. I mean, you know, some unions could get a little antsy, it's sort of theoretical. But, you know, let's face it, self-insurance is no insurance. I mean, you're your own insurer. So, if you get pulled over by one of North Branford's police officers, and they ask for your insurance card, you're not gonna be able to say, "Oh, well, I'm self-insured." You know, and you, so what's gonna happen is you're going to assume, as you know, a great portion of the initial loss. And then there'll, there should be insurance after a certain number of millions of dollars where you will have a little or five insurance, yeah. But what happens with, with labor unions sometimes is one of the criteria when they sit down and negotiate, or when they go to arbitration, is the most, the preeminent one is the town's ability to pay. If the town gets hit by a big insurance claim, and they're self-insured, it's going to affect, it's going to be an obligation that's going to affect the negotiations. And that's what they may be concerned about. Now, if you don't have language in there that says going from fully insured to self-insured, you don't have anything to worry about. But I would, I would check that out.
Thank you.
In December, we'll get this information, 'cause, you know, I was here during the discussion about self-insurance, and it does seem to make sense in the long term. I mean, each year, there's a kind of a gamble whether or not you're gonna go ahead or behind. But in December, is it our plan to try to decide if we're gonna move towards this next year? Because I'm wondering if we should come up- Because I'm wondering if we should come up with information that we're going to want in December, so that we don't start the process in December, and then get more information, and then wait till February, and then wait till, I mean, I think we need to decide what are the key, this doesn't have to be, you know, at this moment, but decide what are the key factors that we are going to use to decide whether we're going to insure, self-insure or not, so that we can actually move ahead on that, instead of, instead of just getting more information? Because I think it was a pretty compelling, you know, presentation when we heard about, heard about it a couple of months ago.
Most towns in Connecticut and boards of education, I believe, are self-insured. It's, it works well for the municipal employer or the board.
Do we still have enough employees to make it work?
We've always been right on the cusp of where it made sense, lives that we cover. So, right now, we're probably, the life size, coupled with the taxes that are coming into place for the fully insured plans, are probably going to make it more attractive for us to go down that road.
Okay.
Okay, item nine, community events and presentations. Item 10, citizen statements and petitions and correspondence. Item A, Hazwaste Central Invoice for Second Half of Fiscal Year.
Yeah, it's in there, just more of informational purposes, just so you see what's, what's going on with Hazwaste.
Item B, Department of Transportation Regarding Route 17 and Route 22 Traffic Control Signal Equipment.
Again, just more informational, that the state is doing changes, as you see in the corresponding document, the change in the lights in Northford on the two areas there. That's, that's an upgrade to the signalization. Talked with the chief, and unfortunately, the local traffic authority has not met in time for this correspondence, but they will meet to review. On the face of it, it doesn't seem like there's any issue that they would have with the state coming in to upgrade the signalization.
Well, they're putting a signal out to 150 and 22, right? What house, I haven't known 22?
It's...
No, it's where the existing traffic lights are.
Right in the center.
22 and 17, and then...
What village?
We have to Northford Village, and we have exit.
Right. The two existing lights that are there.
I'd like to ask to adjourn the amended, to add C, to talk about the Aegis solar project that's going on in town.
I'll second that.
Moved by Council Fucy, seconded by Council Angeloni. Roll call.
Mayor Candelaure?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Whitworth?
Yes.
Council Angeloni?
Yes.
Council Caprio?
Yes.
Council Diamond?
Yes.
Council Fucy?
Yes.
Council Hodgson?
Yes.
Council Rose?
Yes.
Okay, now, you can make them, make a motion to put that item on. You just got permission to amend it. I think you have to make another motion to discuss whatever it was that...
Move a motion to put that on the agenda? I thought that's what you just... No, you made a motion to amend the agenda.
To amend the agenda.
To amend the agenda.
Aegis Solar.
Okay. I'd like to, I'd like to add Aegis, letter C, to discuss Aegis solar project that's going on.
Second.
Moved by Council Fucy, seconded by Deputy Mayor Whitworth for discussion. Roll call.
Mayor Candelaure?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Whitworth?
Yes.
Council Angeloni?
Yes.
Council Caprio?
Yes.
Council Diamond?
Yes.
Council Fucy?
Yes.
Council Hodgson?
Yes.
Council Rose?
Yes.
Thank you, Councilor. Briefly, I wanted to discuss, Mike, I've gotten a few calls from some of the residents in town that have agreed to move forward with the solar project. Last week, I had given you a folder with one of the residents in town. Has there been any progress with the UI company and with what's going on with the solar?
Yeah, I called our rep, who's Roger Parisi, and he's tracking it down internally for me, giving him, you know, all the, all the information that I had that you'd given me in terms of the resident. So he's, he's working it through his channels, understanding that there is some issues, multiple issues there with the, with the house, with the transformer, about how they treat, you know, the size of the system and so forth. It's a lot of technical information and review process that UI has. So, I put it in his lap to ask for the internal to get back to me as soon as he can, and hope to hear something this week on where they are with that.
Okay.
Yeah, I know, you know, I talked with the owners as well. I got additional information before I talked to Roger on that. And, yeah, I know it's been a frustrating process for them in their particular case. They had a certain size that we're looking for, and the problem with the transformer and how they, again, it's a lot of technical stuff that I'm learning about, and I'm trying to understand in terms of the size of the system and the regulations involved. So he's going to give me a report on that, and I can bring that back or send out as soon as I hear from him.
Are we having more problems with the same solar company in other areas, or with other people?
We had like 29, I think, residents sign up for it.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, this is, I mean, I've only heard, I mean, the specifics of the folder you gave me in terms of this one resident, and so we're working on that. I've not heard from any others, but I understand that there's a difference between how it works, or I'm told how it works with CLMP in the rest of the state, and how UI, and that's what I'm trying to confirm, that UI isn't doing something different than, say, CLMP. You know, things like, if CLMP, and I'm trying to confirm, CLMP looks, does not look too intensively at anything that's under 10 KW, whereas UI does. But there are, obviously, there's an oversight committee at the state level that pummels these regulations as to how the utilities operate. So, I think it would be consistent among all the utilities, and not just...
Right.
...picking and choosing how they're going to do it, but I'm still waiting for that report.
I know she's here this evening. I don't know if you want to address the council and describe any of your...
Yeah, I don't mind. I probably don't need the microphone either.
No, but you have to, come up, just state your name for the record, please. Thank you.
My name's Lisa DePonte, and I live on Palm Lane. We were one of the first people to sign up for the solar project. I mean, literally, the very first workshop, I was the first person that handed them my piece of paper to apply. And since then, they have continually given us, well, first, it was the representative, the legislature at the state level messed up the right rebates by one number, and then they said, you know, when they were typing it up. And so then, that got put on hold. This was from May 22nd. We signed our original contract on May 28th. We were supposed to have eight to 10 weeks, and it was going to be completed at that point, according to the contract that we were signed. We still do not have a solar system. Our system that we're asking for is not like a $30,000 or 30,000 kilowatt system, it's a 7,000 kilowatt system. So it's not even huge. And we have a little house. And I just actually called for an update today. We also have, we placed $1,500 deposit for this system. We had to pay over $2,500 to have trees removed to put the system in, which was part of our cost, but we've already closed on the loan to get the system, and we don't have a system. I called today for an update, and I was told that they sent our paperwork in again to UI. We had to send one application, and then because UI kicked it back, we had to pay another $900 for another system, another application. It was $400 for the application fee, and $500 for an electrician to test the transformer. So that's another 900 bucks. And so then, they turned around, and today I was told, well, we sent the paper in on August 19th, that gave, they have 15 days to respond. So, 15 days is like within the next day or two. We did receive on August 26th, an email from UI saying they received our application, the re-application fee of $400, and that we had to tell the electrician who was going to do the test on the transformer to follow a certain protocol. And I just got that in the mail, or my email today. And I am just thoroughly disgusted. I expected the town to back this up, because it was, you know, everything was about the town. They were doing the workshops in town buildings. You know, part of the money from these systems are supposed to go to the town, you know, part of the solar, that it was supposed to cut back on costs for the town, for solar is my understanding. And that was one of the reasons why my husband and I decided to choose to do solar now. We had been, you know, investigating it for about six months, and then the workshop came up, and I was like, oh, this is the perfect opportunity. We'll be able to help the town and help ourselves, save some money. And all I've had is no email, no contact with this Aegis unless I initiate it. They never respond back to me when I call them. I have to call them and keep calling until I get a call back. Or, and then I get, I, well, about this, this new, this 19 days, I asked specifically, I said, will you, will you send me an email to that effect? And he goes, well, the UI will send you one. I said, no, I don't want UI to send me something, I want you to send me something. I mean, I'm doing business with you. I'm spending $25,000 for the system, you know? And these people are just horrible. And so I just, you know, I had brought it to Mayor Candelaure's attention a week and a half, about two weeks ago, right before this 19th. I had brought it to his attention, and he has responded really positively and been trying to help. He has talked to these people multiple times, because he, and Mayor Candelaure calls me every time he talks to them. And, but, you know, it's still, here it is, September 2nd, I signed up for solar, May 22nd. At that workshop, they said eight to 10 weeks. And here it is, 16, 18 weeks later, and I still don't have the system.
Michael, why don't you talk to our representative up at the state and our senator, and have them contact the DPUC and see what's going on here?
Yeah, because they keep throwing it off on other people.
Because there's no way she should be paying another $400 for another application when she already paid once, and it's not her fault that the system did not go in. So we got a, we got a bone to pick with them.
And, you know, but the thing is, Aegis has said, first, it was the state legislature because they made an error on a bill. Then it was, then it's been UI, and UI again, and then when I spoke to him today, he told me, well, the guy was on vacation last week, so they didn't do any authorizations, so it's probably going to add another week to that. And I was like, really? You know, I mean, UI doesn't have anybody else who does these authorizations? Just one guy? So, you know, I just, I wanted to bring it up to the town's attention, because I don't know if anybody, I have not seen any new solar systems up in town, and I drive, I'm a home care nurse, and I drive through town, all over the place, all the time, and if I had seen a new solar system going up, I would have checked it out. And I have yet to see one go up. So I don't know who else, you know, I just was lucky enough that I happened to live two doors away from Mayor Candelaure, so I kind of went, here's my junk in his mailbox, you know? But...
Has there been any, Michael, has there been any systems that you know?
I don't know how many, if there's been other people or not.
I don't, there are certainly others that have signed up, gone through.
No, but I mean, any projects that have been installed or completed, that we know?
I have to find out, I don't know. I mean, there are various processes, I don't know.
Did they?
Yeah.
So, I don't know if the same, what they did on their own is, I should check it out.
Do you know what people signed up, like the identity of the other 20-something families that contracted for this service?
You know, there's, there's, there may have been some families or interested party residents that signed up for the survey and then, you know, drop out. I think I saw a list of maybe nine that were going through, signed contracts that have, you know, come through the system.
When you say you saw this, do you have the identity of the people who signed contracts, or you just saw it and no longer have it?
No, no, I have it, yeah, it's somewhere in the email log, because I'd asked for, you know, how many, where we are, I think Mayor...
Through Maggie?
Maggie, through Maggie had sent me, you know, in terms of where we are with how many KW system-wide, and I know the...
But you have the identity of nine other homes.
I think it has all the identity, one's a business, and the others are, I think, residential, yeah, we have that.
Why don't you contact each of those nine individuals or businesses, and find out what their experience has been?
Sure.
Because if we are in any way connected with this, and we did give authorization to hold these seminars in public, public buildings, it seems to me we have a responsibility to the citizens to make sure this is being handled in a proper business manner. And if it's not, we need to revoke that authorization we gave them to conduct their seminars and promote their product in town facilities.
Have you tried contacting Maggie to see if she can help?
Yeah.
I mean, because that was...
Yeah, that was my first step, when the mayor came to me, and then it was talking with the owner, Chris, I can't think of it, but the CEO for Aegis, and to talk about where they are in the process. And he did explain that the credit, on the credit side of CFI, there was a mix-up at the state level, and I think it was beyond just more than their application. I think somebody stripped out language in a bill that I've yet to confirm, but this is the story, that someone stripped out the language that derailed the funding process for CFI, which gives them the credits to do these deals. So that backlogged a few things. But I think there's that issue, and for them, I think there's a transformer issue that...
My transformer only has two houses on it.
Yeah.
And it's a brand-new transformer, because the pole that went down in Irene...
Right.
...was leveled. So it's a brand-spanking new transformer, and there's only my house and the house across the street, which happens to be my nephew. Okay? And they're both small houses. It's not like they're, you know, the McMansions like over on, you know?
So, so you said you closed on the loan already?
Yeah.
Are you, has that money been dispersed to Aegis?
No, I have no idea.
Are you paying, like, a mortgage on this, or interest on this?
They told us, yes, we're paying interest on it, 6% interest on it, and, but we don't have to make a payment till December. And I'm like, my husband is dealing, had dealt with all of that stuff. I had initially started all of this, but because of my husband's, you know, anyway, he's doing all the money part, and I'm just floored. And we've had, they, they didn't tell us this either, but they wouldn't even go through with the survey until we had had a $99 survey of the house's energy usage, which didn't tell me that either. And they didn't tell us that in the workshop. So, I mean, this thing has, has so far, without any work being done in my house, except for a couple of light bulbs being changed, this has cost me over $5,000. And, like I say, and I owe 25,000, whether I get the system, whenever I get it, I got to start paying on it. Because we had to close on the loan before they would even do anything for, like, do the applications. And then, the mortgage company is hooked up with this other company, Aegis. The mortgage company is called Sun Gauge.
Of course they are.
And we could not, we had to use Sun Gauge to finance the solar system.
Yeah.
And I didn't know all of this until it all started, you know, like, it all started gelling in my brain, I'm going, what is this? This is insane. But we've already signed all these contracts. And so I don't even know where we're at legally. I mean, I'm at the point I'm going to get an attorney, because it's at, we're at the point, they breached their contract. From May 28th, it said eight to 10 weeks in their contract, from the date it was signed.
I did read the contract, they had a start and finish date.
Yeah.
They never passed that.
And, and on top of that, my husband's had to take, he took off work expecting it to be taken, you know, you got to ask more than a week away to take off work so you can be there. My husband works for the postal service, so he has to work, ask two months in advance for time off. He took off two weeks. When we thought the solar system was going to be... He took off two weeks when we thought the solar system was going to be put in. And it didn't get put in. So he wasted two weeks of his vacation too.
I just, I just want you to know that, you know, some of us up, we had reservations about this. And we called them out on, I mean, they had this nice name, the Connecticut Solar Challenge. And, and we asked them, like, okay, so what do you have to do with Connecticut? And they were like, uh-oh, they caught us. And they said, absolutely nothing, it's just, you know, a name we picked. So that was the first thing. And I got to tell you, it bothered me that North Branford had anything to do with it. Because, you know, anything like this, it's like a feel-good thing, we're going to go green, we're going to go solar. And so you sit up here and it's, and then they're going to give us, you know, uh, they're going to give us a solar thing that might light the lights in this room here, just to add, and that's what I said, just to add North Branford like we're a partner with them. And all that did is give us a whole bunch of liability. And if, if you're, I'm hoping that you're one of twenty-seven. And everybody else is good, but I will, I, I, I'll bet we're not done hearing from this issue and so, and, and we, we, we own it.
Well, I appreciate you guys listening to me.
Thank you.
And I appreciate the work you do.
At least we have your file and we'll get on it and see what we can do to get this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Okay. Item eleven, resignations and appointments. Item A, resignation, Anthony Calicchio from the Fire Commission.
Mr. Mayor, I can, the acceptance of his resignation was regret from Anthony Calicchio, Fire Commission.
Second.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Wentworth, seconded by Counselor Angeloni. Roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Caprio?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Fucy?
Yes.
Counselor Hodgson?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Item B, appointment, Andrew Campion to the Fire Commission, term to expire twelve-thirty-one, two thousand fifteen.
I'd like to make the motion to appoint Andrew Campion to the Fire Commissioner's term to expire twelve-thirty-one, two thousand fifteen.
I'll second the motion.
Moved by Counselor Diamond, seconded by Counselor Fucy. Roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Caprio?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Fucy?
Yes.
Counselor Hodgson?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Appointment, item C, Elizabeth Kaplan to the Economic Development Commission, term...
I'd like to move that appointment of Elizabeth Kaplan to the EDC as an alternate. I don't know if the term is right, but maybe we'll check it out.
Yeah, that's, it says right here in our...
Term to expire twelve-thirty-one, two thousand fifteen.
Second.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Wentworth, seconded by Counselor Angeloni. Roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Caprio?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Fucy?
Yes.
Counselor Hodgson?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Appointment, Michelle Provenchert to Park Rec Commission, term to expire twelve-thirty-one, two thousand fifteen.
And I can move that appointment, Michelle Provenchert to Park Recreation Commission.
Second.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Wentworth, seconded by Counselor Angeloni. Roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Caprio?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Fucy?
Yes.
Counselor Hodgson?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Item E, reappointment, Deborah Ferraro to the Hazardous Waste Recycling Committee, term to expire twelve-thirty-one, two thousand fifteen.
I'll move to reappoint Deborah Ferraro to the Hazardous Waste Recycling Committee, term to expire twelve-thirty-one, two thousand fifteen.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Fucy, seconded by Counselor Rose. Roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Caprio?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Fucy?
Yes.
Counselor Hodgson?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Item F, reappointment, Abigail Rose Walton to Hazardous Waste Recycling Committee, term to expire twelve-thirty-one, two thousand fifteen.
Mayor, I'd like to move the appointment, reappointment of Abigail Rose Walton to the Hazardous Waste Recycling Committee, term to expire twelve-thirty-one, fifteen.
I'll second it.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Wentworth, seconded by Counselor Fucy. Roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Caprio?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Fucy?
Yes.
Counselor Hodgson?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to amend the agenda to appoint Michelle Pollak to the Innen Levens Commission.
As an alternate?
As an alternate, I guess.
I'll second that.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Wentworth, seconded by Counselor Angeloni. Roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Caprio?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Fucy?
Yes.
Counselor Hodgson?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Okay.
Once again, you just amended the agenda.
Right. Now...
I'd like to move the appointment of Michelle Pollak to the Innen Levens Commission, for term to expire, I don't, I don't know.
Twelve-thirty-one.
Twelve-thirty-one, two thousand fifteen?
Yes.
Twelve-thirty-one, two thousand fifteen.
Second.
There's an alternate?
Yes.
An alternate, yeah.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Wentworth, seconded by Counselor Angeloni. Roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Abstain.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Caprio?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Fucy?
Yes.
Counselor Hodgson?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Okay. Item twelve, unfinished business discussion in action. Item A, update to define benefit plan documents, police union table July ninth, two thousand twelve. Still table?
Yeah. Yes.
Item B?
Nope, before you move on it. Anthony, you know where I'm going with this.
We'll start at any time.
July one. We need to have our, our new benefit plan. Don't be late.
Process doesn't move as fast as you'd like sometimes.
Yeah, but we don't want to be late until I want.
Is that it? All right, item B, senior center, possible reuse and review of lease, the North Branford Food Pantry.
Frank, could I ask you a question? You and John have taken care of pretty much of the leases, is there anything we need to plug in for this lease?
There are open items.
Okay.
Which we'd ask you to consider and hopefully vote on, right?
Make a decision.
Shall I list them, there's three or four?
Okay.
One is the lease term. There was an issue regarding whether or not there would be options. The options have been removed from the lease so that the lease term, as proposed, would expire on June thirtieth of two thousand and seventeen.
So there's no option for you to renew after that?
Well, the, the town council and town attorney were concerned about there being an endless series of options, or some options to renew in the event that the town wanted to make other use of the building and/or sell the building. So rather than have that be an impediment, you know, our hope is, is that we can establish a, a strong foothold and convince the town council that renewing the lease or entering into a new lease is a good idea. I personally would like to see an option, but I certainly don't want it to be an impediment.
I think that the lease that you had before the last council meeting, that we did agree to include options, we just left a blank for how many there would be. So tonight, you're voting on a three-year lease and three-year options. One three-year option, two three-year options, whatever. So we, we incorporated the lessees' interest in having, but that was already in there from the last time. And you should have, and the, and the one that's in your pamphlet also has the options. You just have to pick a number. You're, okay, so we can give them what, like four or three terms? If you want me to just go over what I think... Yes, that would be good. You know, you just, there's a blank space there before renewal options, okay? And you could put a zero there, you could put a one, you could put any number. That's one thing you have to decide tonight, it's obviously very straightforward. Right. The other thing, there, there are two attachments to this lease that are not on this lease right now, I'm sure they exist. One is a floor plan and you want, and I know there was a lot of discussion about that, and I'm thinking that the council came to a consensus on what that floor plan... Didn't we approve that last meeting?
We voted.
We approved that last meeting. Okay, so that floor plan is, merely has to be attached. The other thing that has to be attached, that's referenced in the lease, is a, is the land, is exhibit, and that's just a deed description. But, one thing that's not in here, that I don't know whether this is going to be an issue or not, there's no provision for parking. There, if there's, if there's any, how many spaces are going to be allotted for this, where they're going to be, that implicates the surrounding area of the, of the property. That's the only thing that I think we brought up before, and I think you might want to consider where that parking is going to be. Obviously, the start date of the, of the lease was another number, that's, that's easy, that takes us from, that takes us to page two. And then, the only, the only thing that's happening on page two is the all-important maintenance and repairs. And you've discussed that. I have noticed that we have to make one minor correction here because the landlord of the town is responsible for all repairs and replacement costs above a thousand dollars. And the lessee is responsible for all repairs and replacement costs less than a thousand dollars. So who's responsible for costs of a thousand dollars? So one, someone's going to have to give here, the landlord would be responsible, let's say, for all repairs, a thousand dollars or more, and the lessee would be less than a thousand dollars. But we, we actually, you know, if the dime, if the coin should land on its side and, and the repairs are exactly a thousand dollars, it, it doesn't provide who pays for that. And also, a little bit, just for clarification purposes, this is not a deductible, so that if the, if the repairs are over a thousand dollars, the landlord pays the entire cost of it. So if it's, if the repairs are eleven hundred dollars, it's not like the tenant pays a thousand and we pay one hundred. At least, that's not the way I read this language. So, you know, it's, the cutoff is the cutoff. And...
If we can stay on, on that point, the, the proposal that we had made was to request that the town be responsible for the repairs and the maintenance.
Right.
That was the request, so we, we're at an impasse on that issue.
Okay, well, not, why do we want somebody that's renting a building to pay repair costs? Every time I've ever rented anything, which wasn't too many times, the landlord had to come in and take care of everything. I thought this was a compromised position, actually. But, but I didn't, it was another attorney in my office who discussed this with Frank. The only repairs that they'd be responsible for are a thousand dollars or less, or less than a thousand dollars. This is also a one-dollar-a-year lease. Right. So, again, that may be an open issue for the council to decide. The only other issue that I think has to be put in here somewhere, because I know you discussed it, I know you've got a price for it, and I, I don't know whether you also voted on this or not, but there was a lot of discussion on the ramp and repairing the ramp and the back stairs. That should be, that should be stated in here, who's responsible for that and to, or to what dollar amount. Because, just like in every other lease, anything, any understandings or agreements that you may have, or think you have, must be stated in this document. There are no other understandings. And if you look at number twenty-eight, and again, this is typical, this is the entire agreement. So you, the only other thing that I can remember the town discussing with the lessees was a question of the building code and how much it would take to make a temporary repair or whatever the issue is. But what, however you decided that, or are to decide, that should be mentioned in, in this lease. That should be noticed, and who's going to pay for that?
Under item sixteen, utilities, I thought the agreement or the proposal was that they would pay the utilities up through June thirtieth of two thousand and fifteen, that our current fiscal year that we're in.
That's correct.
I thought that was part of the discussion.
That's correct.
Not the first twelve months.
Right, that's what that's supposed to say.
No, that's correct. The utilities would be paid by the food pantry through June thirtieth, two thousand and fifteen.
Because that would give us time then to work in our budget next spring for the following fiscal year.
Yeah, yeah. The, the ramp issue, if we can address that, and I know Lynn has some prices or people willing to donate. It's my understanding that we have companies, people willing to demo the existing ramp and donate the concrete, as discussed the last time. We don't have someone who will put the forms in, and we don't have someone who will fabricate the rails. But the, the donations, we, if we, we can't agree that they will do it in a year's time, they're willing to do it now, so we have a bit of a dilemma.
Right.
And I'm not sure how much the rails would cost. I suspect they would be several thousand dollars, but the people, the donors are willing to do it now, and I wouldn't want to agree to buying them a year, a year from now if they're not willing to donate, donate that a year from now, and I wouldn't want to have to pay for it out of our budget. So we, you know, Lynn has some numbers, and we figured the first year to open, it's going to cost us about thirty thousand dollars to open it, out of the food pantry's funds, which will have to be raised. So that's...
Okay, I thought the ramp issue, when we asked last time, and Al had asked if we could draw up the plans here, and I thought the building inspector, there was an email that said, they cannot, we have to have an architect do the ramps? Was that part of that?
Well, I, I think we, we talked about, I didn't remember seeing anything like that. I, I know we talked about potentially doing an house between Kurt and Tom in terms of trying to, you know, design it that way. It's as a, you're taking it right out of the building code in terms of the design. I thought we could do that internally.
Okay.
However, the other issue was the threshold question of, of the ramp itself, that public works could be allowed to repair, the patch and repair, and to get it operational.
For this year, so that we could discuss it in our budget and plan for the following year.
As a short term, and then address it in a five-year capital, put it in the capital project, address it a year later, two years later, you know, to get, to get them, you know, operational, one item.
No.
Because I think Fran would have some, or the town would have some reservations in sort of a split between donations and doing it that way.
So then, that's fine. So then, we, we can patch it, Fran?
Yes.
And it's going to cost us a minimal amount of money?
Very minimal.
Minimal, okay.
I checked with the building inspector.
Okay.
The building inspector cannot design the ramp.
I thought that's, I thought, I thought I saw that.
He can't inspect something he designs.
But we can make it serviceable for handicapped people, and it's workable?
As is.
And we can open this pantry and do what we need to do?
Right.
Okay, that's all I need to know. So we can open the pantry, and you guys will take care of the ramp?
That's the ramp issue, the back stairs.
Roughly two thousand.
Right, that's two thousand.
That's a requirement that has to be done as well.
It has to be done, no matter what.
Right, no matter what, exactly.
No matter what. And the other issues have been addressed in terms of the fire code rating, the alarm system's been tested, those public safety issues are all confirmed and done, so that there are no issues there. The steps have to be done.
Right.
When we talked about the ramp last time, there was a discussion about if it can't be used, that, that the building inspector would be the person that could decide whether the building itself could be used with or without the ramp. But what I'm hearing is that we can minimally repair the ramp and use the building as is until a new ramp is, is put in, is that right?
And your minimal cost to repair the ramp, is it under a thousand, under two thousand? Under a thousand?
So for three thousand dollars, we can get this up and rolling. Okay, that's, that's pretty easy and settled, as far as I'm concerned, also. What do you guys think about renewals on, on the lease?
I just have another question about number six, where it says the tenant had exclusive possession. What about the library? It doesn't, it doesn't make sense to me, isn't the library going to be part of the building?
I think this, again, I haven't seen the final...
Is it based on the floor plan?
Floor plan, yeah. I'm presuming that's why...
So that's an exhibit, the floor plan?
Well, I mean, it says, conditions, premises, it calls about the premises, it says premises, what is premises?
That's the floor plan.
Well, because it's attached as part of the lease, he said, before.
The floor plan is part of the lease.
Like, the premises would be the floor plan that would be occupied.
Just the floor, not the intact, well, because if you look at the definition, it says premises is the building, and that's why I was questioning.
Well, no, it's the building and the land.
But that's, your point's well taken. It certainly would be limited to the area that you authorize us to use, so that the friends, the library, could have the rest of the building. And then the parking issue, I, I just assume that, you know, the friends, the library, and the food pantry, people using it for those purposes, we'd park them, the parking lot, right there.
Right, right. I think we can all get along on that building.
And I think there, I counted, Fran may, may know the number, but I think there's nine spaces either side with a, it's sort of a mirror image, is nine spaces with a handicap each side. In that way, it's laid out, just...
Yeah, it's pretty close to that.
Yeah, I think there's... Yeah, I think there's nine or ten.
Well, I, I'd like to give them at least one renewal, if that's up to anybody to comment on.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, actually, I'd like to make a motion to put one renewal in the lease.
Second.
We haven't even approved the concept of the lease, so we're talking about putting changes.
Well, it's not a change, it's a plug-in.
But if we're going to vote, shouldn't we have like...
We can't do a lease without putting that number in.
We first have to determine whether or not we're going to permit the use of the building at all for food pantry.
Okay, let's do a, I vote, I...
Let me finish, please. We need to make a determination, we're going to permit the use of the building. In doing that, I'd like to have an understanding of what it is we're permitting and what the cost long-term to the town is. That's been my concern all along, which I've never gotten a handle on.
Well...
We have, when I finish, you can tell me I am wrong.
Go ahead, go ahead. I will.
We've gotten a number of proposals, the most recent of which is we can get them up and running with a ramp under a thousand dollars, and rear stairs approximately twelve thousand dollars.
Two thousand.
Pardon, two thousand dollars. So we're looking at a cost of two to three thousand dollars to get the operation going. That seems reasonable to me. We believe that replacement of the ramp alone is approximately thirty thousand dollars unless there are donations, in which case, obviously, it would be, whatever the donations are worth, less than the thirty thousand dollars. We've gotten Fran's estimate from a contractor that said inclusive of the ramp, it would be sixty thousand dollars to get the building up to snuff. We also are leasing a building which, I'm not sure, but I'm going to guess is a hundred years old, and common sense dictates is going to have continued capital needs for mechanicals, for roofing, for whatever going forward. And I don't think if this operation is a success, we're looking at a short-term arrangement, we're going to be looking at a long-term arrangement. So, we have to assume that those sixty thousand dollars in the years are going to continue at some level throughout the life of the lease, as long as the food pantry approaches.
Are you talking, the letter abatement in that sixty thousand dollars?
Yes.
Sorry?
Are you talking letter abatement in that sixty thousand dollars? He is, Fran, talking letter abatement.
I don't know what we're talking about.
Right, well, that's...
That's my problem.
Right, well, obviously, we have to know what we're talking about, but I knew all about that.
We don't. We consistently don't. We have good intentions, we have no facts.
I, I just don't know why this has to be made into a federal case. This lady has tried, has done so much for this town, and helped this town, and raised so much money, and it's like, we're kind of not trusting her, it kind of upsets me.
Ben, wait, you're confusing things. We're talking about a building, not a food pantry.
Right.
So, let's keep, I think that's what Joe's talking about. So let's keep it on the building and what we're talking about.
It's certainly nothing personal against this lady or against Frank. I think they're wonderful. Let me finish, please.
Sure.
I'll be happy to listen. I've listened for quite a while.
I know you have.
I'm happy to listen to everything you want to say in rebuttal. And I'll be happy to listen to rebuttal from this council, and for the end of the day, everybody convinces me I'm wrong, I'll be happy to lose the vote, because I want this to work, but I want it to be done properly, I want it to be done right, and when it's done, I want the people of this town to benefit from it, not be burdened by an albatross of a bill with a service that really is of minimal value to the town. So, my way of looking at this is, I'm prepared to take the risk of a three thousand dollar expenditure to get this facility up and running, and get these people in there and operating. What I don't think I'm comfortable with is a long-term commitment that's not funded. We haven't made a commitment to fund it, and they haven't made a commitment to fund it.
Actually, in the lease, they did. They're going to pay the utilities for the first year.
Well, that, he said long-term.
Good, pays utilities for one year, and then thereafter, we pick up another twelve thousand dollars in utilities, plus the sixty thousand, plus the unknowns.
We'd have to do something for the friends and the library.
And we don't even know how many families this is going to service.
I think you'd be surprised.
Where I'm going with this is, my suggestion would be we consider a short-term lease of one year, that we give them options to renew that one-year lease, and that the obligation to operate the facility and to repair the building remain with the food pantry. At the end of the year, they make a decision, if their, if their facility is functional, and if their program is viable, they then come back to us and tell us what they've raised or not raised. We are at the point where we're setting a budget. We evaluate what we can and are prepared to contribute to the continuing operation of the food pantry, and we can both make an intelligent decision whether going forward benefits the town, is it undue burden on them, or it's an undue burden on the town. We're not doing something that's unknown, we're not biting off something that we don't have any clue what it's going to be for years from now. I'm obviously entertaining you, Ben.
You are.
I see you sitting there laughing.
You are.
But I don't hear any intelligent answers from you.
Well, have you been listening the past three or four meetings? Have you been listening the past three or four meetings?
I've been listening to a lot of platitudes and good intentions.
Right.
All of which are wonderful.
Now you think this lady's going to take a one-year lease?
They don't pay the bills.
Where are they, ones that own the building? No matter what, we have to fix that building. We own the building.
We don't have to do anything, we didn't budget a dime.
We let the, we let the friends of the library in there.
We, our budget anticipated mothballing that building. Now we're putting it back in the service.
Right, so what's that going to cost us? Fran, right, you said twelve thousand dollars a year, maybe fifteen for electrical and utilities?
I don't believe utilities are...
Right. Go ahead. Because I just...
May I speak? Do I have permission to speak?
Sure.
Okay. So it's been made quite clear, this is your building, and I, and I respect that, okay? But as your building, I want you to just hear what it is that we are bringing to the table for this building, to lighten the load, the burden. The oil tank, for example, is not up to code, it's sitting on concrete. A company, KNT Heating, is willing to donate the oil tank and the installation, so that will help the building. Misano Brothers is willing to demo the existing ramp, remove the crumbled concrete, and haul it off the site. Morando Construction Services, they're willing to donate and the setup, reconstruction, and the pour of the concrete. Both companies are donating all the materials and the labor if it's done soon. You can't hold, hold me to that a year from now, two, two years from now, that wouldn't be fair to me, I don't own those companies. Country Paint and Hardware has already donated the interior paint, and although it's your building, we cleaned and, and took, put a lot of love into the inside of that building. I had a gentleman who works for a quality mechanical put on a hazmat suit, crawl underneath the building already, because there were ducts that were separated, there were some boots that needed to be repaired, and, and some of the, I don't know all the terms of all this stuff, but the installation had fallen off, and it was just a place for rodents to get in, and so on and so forth. So, that was a donation of supplies, and, and so on and so forth. And I, and I think that, that helps a lot. And we have a lot of volunteers that are willing to come forward and, and raise, do food drives and things of this nature. And if you want to talk about a one-year lease, that would be so out of the question, and I can tell you why. We've already, as your suggestion, come forward and got liability insurance. We've already paid twenty-five hundred dollars in liability insurance, even though this is a partnership, as you said at one point, you, you didn't realize that you took the money out of the budget, and so you're saying that they're anywhere from twelve to fifteen thousand. We said, okay, not a problem, we'll take care of that the first year, because that's how much we want to get this open. Has anyone ever considered shelving? I get it, it's our project, but like, it's shelving itself is like seven thousand dollars. Legal fees, five thousand dollars to become a 501(c). Rosia asked where we were with that. It's on hold. Why? Because we've been here, this is month four, and we're still talking about the same stuff over and over and over again. We have, we've already put in eleven hundred dollars to the inside aside from the paint, and then we still have to send out a mailing, a plea for financial assistance with all these bills, so, and that's twelve hundred dollars. So already, we're up to like thirty-two thousand dollars, which we are willing to do the first year, while you guys get it back in the budget, because as someone said here, you've already said to the friends of the library that they are into this building, so you are putting that building back online anyway. You're putting that money back in the budget anyway. They can't sit there in the cold, they can't, they, they can't sit there in the heat. So I really don't understand the problem. And there's absolutely no way we could do this for a year, not at the money that we are willing to put forward and put into the building, and the donations that people have come forward for your building. That's all I have.
The friends of the library were only put in there, we, we didn't open the building for friends of the library, we did it in conjunction. So if, if, if it doesn't go forward that the food pantry's there, friends of the library aren't there either. Because they, they've had someplace, you know, they've stored their books and stuff.
I don't think that was ever said out loud to anyone.
Absolutely not, ever so.
Right.
Well, that's the way I understood it.
That's, that's, that's the way it was presented to us. Well, you know... But anyway, and it, it hasn't been four months, Lynn. You came to us in June, the second half of June, and so we're at like ten weeks, two and a half months, so...
Okay, fourth town, fourth town council meeting.
Right. I, I know things don't move as fast in the government world as they do in the private industry, but that's just the way it is. Plus, the summertime, we don't meet as often. So that has also hindered some of this, because we only have one meeting a month in July and August.
Well, it's just frustrating for the, just for the mere fact that the building is just sitting there empty, and it's just the legalities of the lease, or are we going to do it, or we're not going to do it? And at this point, you know, whatever the town council decides, it is clear to me that you guys are in charge, so whatever it is you decide, I will respect it, I will thank you for your time, and either we're moving forward, or we have to respectfully walk away, because the building is sitting there open. The reality is, people are hungry, and I'm not trying to guilt anyone at all. The truth of the matter is, this year, in the high school, thirty-four point two-six percent of people now are on free and reduced lunch. I don't think I need to go back over the numbers of forty-one thousand for reduced lunch for a family of four, or twenty-nine thousand for a family of four for free, gross income, okay? That's reality. Every paper you open is talking about hunger in Connecticut. I'm just here trying to do my part here in North Branford. Either you want us to help, or you don't, it's up to you. I'm done.
Well, as, as far as the ramp goes, there is no provision in our budget for this year to fix the ramp permanently, to have the work done that has been donated and to do it. We just don't have the money budgeted. We, we could very reasonably get it fixed so that we could open the pantry, if that's the decision of the council to go through, to fix it so that we then can look at it when we go through our budget season. But I can tell you that the cost of doing the ramp is not in the budget for this year, so we wouldn't be able to do that. And when we came to it next year, if the companies were still willing to donate, fine. If not, then that would be a cost that we would have to look at. We were not, I mean, I was not aware of, I don't know if the other council members were aware of, the tank and the other ductwork inspection and all of that stuff that has been, that has been done. I don't think any of us were aware of that. That was the first that I heard of that.
It wasn't done, it was looked at.
Oh.
It wasn't done, it was looked at.
Okay.
And willing to be done.
Okay, all right. So, as far as, you know, Councilor Fawnan's suggestion of looking at it a year from now during budget season, unfortunately, if it gets passed and goes through now, I think they would only have six months of operation by the time we get to budget season, and I, I don't know if that would be realistic. You know, because if they opened in October, you got three months here and three months next year.
The emotions involved with this decision are overlooking the facts. What I said was, I'm suggesting a one-year lease with options to renew. The purpose for that is, it gives everybody a window in a year to say, this works, it makes sense, let's go forward. It gives the council the ability to say, we're going to fund these capital improvements, repairs, whatever it may be, we're going to assume the cost of operating the building at twelve to fifteen thousand dollars a year, or not. At that point, we have a hard number that we're prepared to pay. They then have the ability to say, that works for us, we're going to exercise our option and extend the lease, or it doesn't, and they back away from it.
Right, and I understand that.
Or, at the end of the year, they decide that the need is not being anticipated, and maybe they don't want to continue with it in North Branford. Rather than locking ourselves into a three-year program and locking the town into paying for capital improvements that may or may not have a benefit to this group, all I'm suggesting is, we take care of the immediate need, get them going. If it works, and if we can afford it at budget time next year, we look at the budget then, consider the cost of repairing the ramp permanently, now the oil tank, whatever else it is that comes up, and there will be other things that will come up during a year of operation, other things will be found in this building. We will have a hard number, and we will have to make a decision, can we fund them? If we can, and if their operation makes sense to them, it goes forward then, at their option.
Right, no, I, I understood that. My point was that we want to have a full year of data, we would only have about six months of data.
I can't read it, that's a calendar.
Right. I mean, I mean, that's, that was just, it's just, it would be only six months and not a year of the data, so, you know, that, we would have to still estimate some things on there, but...
Excuse me, can may I make a comment?
Oh, Al.
Al, Al is where? I'm, of course, I'm a resident of North Branford. As, as noble as the cause is, we do have two food banks in North Branford already, one in Northridge and one in North Branford. As a resident of North Branford, I do not want my taxes to go up. And if you put this in your budget, you know we are going to get a mill increase. There's a lot of other things in town that need to be taken care of. Also, the people that are supposed to be helped, especially the ones coming from Northridge, to come all the way to North Branford, what do you think that's going to cost them in gas? I mean, to me, you're putting a tax burden and a personal burden on the people that you're trying to help, when we already have two adequate food banks in town.
Wait, you see an increase in the budget from the Board of Ed next year? Do you think this is a lot of money?
Al, I mean, what am I concerned? No, I didn't, there's not a motion. That ramp, Al, in order to rip that, or, can I have order, please, please? Once you start demoing that ramp, what we've got, we're going to get into wood behind the building, right, Fran? It's not going to be just demoing. And from my experience, framing or forming concrete is the entire job. Well, you're not equipped to put up forms. So, to me, that's something that needs to be done by one company, one shot, rather than, that needs to be done by one company, one shot, rather than, I mean, it's noble that you can get somebody to do the concrete and all, but being a town building, I think it's something that, you know, we should be looking at down the road.
Isn't it a historic building?
Yes.
Okay, it's a historic building, number one. And we're going to take care of this building one way or the other. You think somebody's going to walk in and say, I'll give you half a million dollars for that building with nine Parkinson's disease?
No, no, man, what I'm saying is.
I know, I'm just making an example.
I know. What I'm talking about is the ramp. I don't, I think we should not look at demoing it, or just.
Well, if we can fix it, right. If we fix it, patch it up, get it to work, and I would think, I don't know, I would, we've got to go at least three years. And I think it's going to do a lot of help in our community, and it's not going to cost the taxpayers a lot of money. I mean, you're talking $15,000 over a $42 million budget. And 63% of that's BOA.
Excuse me. In regards, I'm sorry, in regards to your concern about multiple companies doing whatever, the Morando Construction Services said they would donate the setup, the reconstruction, and the pour of the concrete. All the town needs to do is come up with a rail and the plan. That's it. So really, the burden is really falling on the companies making a donation on behalf of the food bank.
Right. What I'm saying is, I didn't want all the burden to fall on you, you know, being a town building and.
But if that's what it takes, and these companies are willing to do it, it's a win-win for everyone.
Right. I think we just need to vote one way or the other, guys.
Can I just say one thing? My name's Tracy Bureau. I live on Harrison Road. My father-in-law is a senior in town. He lives in the senior housing. He currently utilizes the food pantry at the church across the street from the senior center. As lovely as it is to have those two pantries open and available, they are not open enough for people who work to utilize them. I've been there with him on occasions when he has needed a ride or help with carrying the groceries to his car. The condition of the current pantries is not attractive. It's in the basement of the church. It's damp. It's dirty. The waiting area is in the storage facility. And oftentimes, he has come home and has had to throw food away because it's expired. There's just not enough people right now helping to do what needs to be done in the current pantries. And I don't know what your situations all are, but I know what his situation is. And if you've never had to utilize a pantry, God bless you. He struggles, and it is a benefit for him. So I would, you know, think that it would benefit quite a few people, not just 10 families, as someone has commented. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask you a question? 10 weeks ago or however, when this whole started, we may had a vote, and it was unanimous vote for those people that were here. I guess I'm confused, well, what did we vote on? Is there any clarification on that? Because at that time, it seemed like there was a proposal made, and in the spirit of what we heard, we agreed to move forward with that. And I thought, I mean, that's, that was the, that was the experience that I had. That's what I watched on the television. And since then, we've been talking about details, about a lease, about specifics, about moving ahead. But I guess it was my understanding that we had, in the spirit of this, that we had already agreed to move ahead with it. And I'm not sure if I was, was I, I was there?
You were there, and you were right.
Can someone explain what, like, it seems like we're back, we're backtracking.
Exactly, that's what we did.
The consensus of the council was to allow them to go in and clean up and paint.
Right. And then we were told.
Which was moving the project forward. That was, it wasn't a vote, it was a consensus of the council. And it was at the July 8th meeting when we did that. But you are correct. That was the consensus.
Yes, you are. Well.
I actually watched all the videos several times, June, July, and August. And I do believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I think at the June meeting, you were not there, Mr. Rosen, you were not there, Mr. Fawnan, is that correct? Okay. It is at that June meeting. And you wished me well, and I thanked everybody's hands, and you, and you gave me, you gave us the green light to go forward with this project. That is what happened at the June meeting. Anybody can go back and watch the videotape. And ever since then, we have been doing just that, backpedaling, 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 to the point where now, it almost appears it's all being shut down. And I'm not so sure why or what's going on here. I really don't know. This has just been an interesting ride. So it was at June, watched, watched the tape. You all did vote for those who were here. You did.
No, we didn't.
I'm glad I don't watch those TV tapes.
I have to, so I know.
I know you do. I live it, so I don't want to watch it.
I have the minutes. I can read what it said. It was moved by Councilor Angeloi, accepted by Council of Citi to proceed with turning the former senior center into the North Branford Food Bank and Library Bookstore. I think that then it followed that we wanted a report in terms of what it was going to cost in terms of the building, from the building official, if it was going to be okay, and public works in terms of structural needs, and the need for contractors or volunteers for insurance. So we did, we said to proceed.
Right. We did.
Right.
And after that decision, it was my understanding that they went, this group went ahead at their own expense to buy insurance, to, with our, with our go-ahead, they went and took expenses upon themselves in the hope of satisfying what we had, what we had set our part of the agreement. That was my, my understanding. I mean, I don't under, I mean, it sounds like they, they've moved ahead. I thought that the past couple of weeks, we've been talking about the specifics of the lease, and these are all important things to.
They've done, they've done a lot on their end.
I'm sorry, I just want to know, but what, what did we vote on? Because if we didn't vote on moving ahead, then what did we vote on?
I think the thing that really surprised people is we found out after we talked, after our meeting was over, that there was no money in the budget. I think we thought.
Yeah, well, that was.
There was money in the budget. For the utilities.
But she took care of that.
Well, we were, pardon?
She took care of that. She's paying them the first year.
But I think that's what upset people, that we didn't know that during the discussion.
I don't understand the mentality. It's like, I don't really understand. There's no letdown to it. We did a lease with the Historical Society, and that was no problem. I mean, why is this a problem?
Is it more valuable for the building to lay empty and pay nothing to let it go to rot than to help people feed people in the town? I just don't, I mean, that's, look, maybe, maybe that's an emotional appeal, but it's our building. I mean, are we going to do anything with it? We might as well just bomb it then. If we're not going to use it, then let's just get it off the rolls entirely.
Good boy. I like you tonight.
But I just don't, well, thank you. Well, thank God. I don't lie. But I just don't, I mean, I just don't see what, look, I understand we have to come up with money. We don't want to do this blindly. We want to be responsible for everyone. But everyone pays taxes. This is, it's for our community. I mean, we're helping our community. What, I don't see what the downside, if we're not going to use the building for any good purpose, and we mothballed it, but then we allowed genetics programs to go in there. That doesn't, I mean, did we mothball the building, or did we not mothball the building? Are we using, is it our building, or is it not our building? I mean, I don't understand. I was here. Like, I'm a volunteer. I spent eight hours of my life here, hearing all these arguments. I'm a reasonable person. I pay my fair share of taxes. I have no kids. I'm like a good, good taxpayer. I don't have any expenses.
There you go.
So I just don't, I mean, I respect all of you. It's an honor to be on this council. And I know everyone wants, everyone wants, everyone, we want the best thing for the town, but I just don't, we already voted on this. I mean, that was, I was here.
Okay. I'm good. So we got to approve the lease, is what you're saying?
Well, I don't, look, I'm only one member, one of nine, and I respect every person on this council. I think I have had the least amount of experience as everyone. But I was there, right? I was there.
You were there.
So I don't know. Look, you hate me or not hate me, but I just have to speak, I mean, I was there, we agreed. But I don't know, I just don't understand. I mean, enlighten me, what did we vote on? Didn't we, we voted the spirit, we made the decision that this group went ahead and spent money on their own behest to get insurance for something. I mean, you don't get, you don't allow someone to go and paint a building if you're not going to allow them to use it. I mean, that would, that would be, that'd be like me asking my tenants to, you go and you clean the building, and then I'll rent it to someone else. I mean, that doesn't make any sense.
Good man.
I'm sorry. I just have to speak my mind.
Thank you.
Frank, the concept of a one-year lease with multiple options to renew for additional one-year periods, could you explain to me why that's detrimental to your organization?
I think that if you, if we were to green light the lease tonight, by the time we got it in and up and running, let's say it's November, let's just be optimistic. What I'd ask is, how about if you do two years, June of 2016? It's a year and a half.
It's not the term of the lease that concerns me. It's an opportunity to look at the actual expenditures that are going to be needed, to find out exactly what it is you've been able to raise to defray those expenditures, and to determine how we can go ahead as a partnership that each side can continue to afford to do business with the other. That's what I'm looking for, is that window. If it doesn't make sense, if at the end of this fiscal year, this council comes to a budget that does not provide a line item for operating or subsidizing the food pantry, then I think you folks have a hard decision to make. Can you go forward with it, fully funding it yourself? If we only partially fund you, obviously this decision is easier, but it's still one that has to be made. If we fully fund you, then clearly you're going to exercise the option to take property for another year, and you're going to continue seamlessly going forward. All it does is it gives us an opportunity to pause, look at where we've been, look at what we've done, and look at what it's going to cost going forward.
And I understand that. And I think the big expense here is the ramp. Big expense is the ramp.
That we know of right now. That's right.
That we know of right now. So let's say the ramp is repaired, and we're able to carry it for a year and a half. And I'm focusing on the year and a half lease, because by the time we get up and running, people are aware it's there, we help, we get rolling, the year's going to be up. June 30th, 2015 is going to be up.
It's not fair.
We're going to expend $31,000 to get up and running, and then you guys can pull the plug before we've had the opportunity.
We can't pull the plug.
You can choose not to renew. Right.
No, no, no. Only you choose. It's your option, not ours.
Well, that's different.
I thought you said that last time.
That's different.
An option to renew is the tenant's right.
Well, at the last meeting, Town Council wanted you to have the option to renew.
Five options.
I would be fine with that. Absolutely.
Let me finish this time.
Okay.
Just so we understand each other, I am, I am suggesting that we take the opportunity to get you going, that we make the repairs that are needed to the stairs, to the ramp that makes the building legal, that Tom Caldwell doesn't come out there and give you a cease and desist. You start functioning. We have to set our budget next April. At that point in time, you're going to know what, if anything, we're going to expend for fiscal year, July 1, 15 to 16. I don't really care whether your lease is up in June or November. Doesn't matter to me. What I want is a window where we can have this dialogue again, with a little less emotion and a lot more clarity, and we both can make some intelligent decisions. Because from our point of view, it's going to be funding. From your point of view, it's going to be, is the funding enough? Can we bridge the gap and raise the money they won't fund to keep going? And if nothing else happens, the worst-case scenario is, you decide not to exercise the option to continue. That's your decision, and we all say, we tried, it didn't work.
Well, I guess the devil's in the detail. And are you suggesting that the option to renew also consists of an option where we would be required to pay the utilities for the next fiscal year? Or would the option be, you would pick up the utilities for the next fiscal year? Because that's.
I can't sit here tonight and look into a crystal ball and tell you, there's 15, 30, 45, or $100,000 available for you next year. You know how this council budgets. We're looking for nickels and dimes all the time. And I'm very concerned that the need of the pantry is going to be more than you anticipate it's going to be. I know what you intend, and I know you have every intention of going out and raising money yourself. And I have every confidence that you're going to do that. What I don't know is, at the end of the day, how much you're going to have, how much you're going to need to look to us to. What I'm loath to do right now is to commit for three years that I'm going to, on behalf of the taxpayers of this town, fund a charitable organization to the minimum tune of 12,000 to 15,000 dollars, plus some capital improvements, plus the unknown. That's where I have trouble.
And that, and I understand that, and that's okay. If, if you were to have the opt-out next year, and I'm calling it because if you were to say, we can't fund this project in the next fiscal year, therefore, the pantry has to pick it up, I don't know that we would consider this as a viable location. To dump the 31,000 or 32,000 dollars in it.
That's a fair characterization of my proposal, because I'm really putting the onus on you folks.
Right.
To raise enough money so that we become a non-factor.
And what the original discussion was, that if we carried the utilities the first year.
I understand.
Capital funds exist in a capital fund account to do the capital improvements. So, I mean, we can, I think we understand each other. I understand where you're coming from. You don't want to, you don't want to open the door.
I think if we had, if we had an ironclad guarantee for every such a thing, and we both knew that you guys were going to pay the utilities, and our contribution was going to be $30,000 to this organization to function, we'd probably all tighten our belts, take a deep breath, and say, go for it. Where I pause is when I don't know what that number we're going to have to contribute is. And that's always been my problem, and it continues to be. So all I'm proposing is, you drive this bus. You have it for a year. If at the end of the year, you're not getting enough from us, yes, we may have to make the hard decision that you cannot continue doing that. If that's not a palatable proposal, then I'll just back off. The council can make whatever motion it wants, and the vote will go as it goes.
I, I understand your point perfectly. And the risk to get the building operational, fund it the first year, buy the shelving, the cleanup, everything that needs to be done, like I said, it's so costly on this end, that if there's a very real possibility that come July 1 next year, we would be expected to continue to pay for the utilities and other items, I don't think we could go forward financially.
Right.
It would not be a sound fiscal decision for the entity.
I have one question, just one second.
That's okay.
Do you think one year is long enough time to get a true snapshot of what this pantry is going to do? I don't think so.
I don't, but, but I.
I've been in business for 25 years, okay? And let me tell you, your first year is rough.
And I understand Councilor Fawnan's point is, he doesn't know what's going to happen. And what if it's a dark hole? I understand your point. And that's why I suggested, if the ramp is a non-issue for the first year and a half, maybe what we're really looking at is just the utilities. But the concern is, once the door opens, there may be other things that go. I think that's your concern.
I think there's a certain, other things will go.
Yeah.
And right now, this lease is drafted. The onus of maintaining it beyond $1,000 is on the town.
Yes.
That's a risk I'm not prepared to take.
I understand.
Personally, I'm not speaking to the other eight people here. Personally, I don't want to take that risk. As, as a representative of the taxpayers, I think it's irresponsible of me to say, I'm giving you a blank check for three years and possibly a three-year option, that we're going to pick up all of the, all of the physical failings of this 100-year-old structure.
And that's fair.
This building was inspected by a building inspector, right? And what did he say?
Basically, well, the, basically, the stairs and the side has to be done.
And the rest of the building's fine?
But he never provided that writing to us, right?
Right. What about the roof and all the, you know?
The roof, I mean, it's dirty as fine. It's going to be replaced someday yet.
Right, of course, like every roof.
Not touching the oil tank right now, it'll happen.
Right. But Lynn said that's going to be taken care of. So I, all these roadblocks we're throwing up here, just, to me, doesn't make sense. I mean, it's not like we're looking at $100,000 going into this food bank. I mean, you know, come on up.
The most available information, when the building was open for use.
I'm sorry. I mean, I'm like the most liberal, giving person in the world, okay? I mean, I work 60 to 80 hours a week, and I give everything to my patients, okay? Believe me, my husband would attest to that. But the thing is, I feel as a taxpayer in this town, that yes, we are talking about $100,000. Maybe not this year, but over the next three to five years, yes, we're talking $100,000. We're talking $12,000 to $15,000 a year for utilities. We're talking $60,000 for the capital repairs. And that's just what they're talking about right here in this meeting. That's not, if the roof goes, if we have a hurricane or a whatever, you know, a snowstorm and the roof goes.
It's our building. It's, we have to take care of it no matter what.
Well, that's right. But at that point, is it, then we're at, they've got a food bank, then we're also going to be responsible for everything that they've put in that building.
How are we responsible for everything they put in that building?
No, we're not.
But, you know, I mean. But, you know, I mean, repairs, anything over $1,000, and we're paying that thousand if it goes over $1,000, too.
Right.
And that's the other thing, I mean, I heard it mentioned over here, that if it's $1,100 to repair, they're not responsible for the thousand, we're responsible for the $1,100. And to me, that, it's not a deductible, but it should be. I mean, they are responsible, it's just like if I rent a house or anything else, I'm responsible. Let's say some client of the food bank drives through the front of it. Their liability insurance will cover it, but on the other hand, it's a 100-year-old building, could cause structural damage. That becomes a big issue. But my issue is, and I think two years, a two-year lease might make sense, but I don't think, I don't think a three- or a five-year lease with all these renewals makes sense if you don't even know this thing is going to go.
It's going to go crazy.
I have a question. The building, either the building is open or the building is not open, right? So if it's not open, then there's no cost to the town, except that the building's going to deteriorate and it will be-
There's very minimal costs.
It will be a loss to the town.
Because we have, we still have to insure it, which is minimal, and we do have to heat it somewhat, but it's very low. So there's minimal costs involved.
So if the building is closed, then there's a minimal cost. But if the building is open, there's going to be some cost to the town to use it as a town building, and we own the building. So we have, there's going to be some, either, so the decision is to open the building or not open the building. Because the cost to maintain the building is going to be ours, whether it's open or not. So there's going to be some set cost in terms of owning, being a property owner. We have to own, we're going to own the building, so either if we close it or whatever.
We have Auger House, for instance, up on 17 there, and Fran can tell you the luck we had with that house, that we rented out. But right now, it's mothballed, so we do have like, you know, 17.
The problem, Eric, becomes, the analysis is simplistic, but the reality is much more complex. When you say, "We have a cost if we don't open it, and if we do open it, we have a cost," well, no, they're not the same thing. We know right now that that ramp has got to be replaced, and if it's going to service elderly people that are handicapped, the ramp has to be up to code. That's a $30,000 cost, and a no has to be incurred if the building is open, but not if it's not open. So that's one no. What other no's are there? None that I'm aware of, but there will be more no's.
A 100-story building.
The cost will not be the same.
Right, well, it's the cost of owning a building. I mean, we own the building.
They may.
Well, the way I look at it, it's no different than the Reynolds Beer's house, because that is, you know, that's leased to the Historical Society for a dollar, and we have to maintain that building also. So when the furnace went out a year or so, we had to put the furnace in, into the building.
So why is it different for her than the historical?
Well, that's, that's my point.
I know that.
Is that it's a town building, we have to maintain it, whether there's someone in it or not in it, and it's not any different than the Reynolds Beer's house.
Just one little clarification. We also have the issue of the repairs. The $1,000 I inserted, or as a compromise, but I think you've heard Frank say that that's not what, there's no agreement on that. So that also, that also is something that the parties have opened.
You need a vote.
Yeah, you need the term, you need the option, and you also need what, if any, division there is going to be with regard to making repairs. Right now, this is my, this is my office's suggestion, but it wasn't anything that was negotiated.
It's not agreed on yet, either.
Right, right. And also, as I said, the other thing, and you're talking about it, of course, all night here, and that is the repairs, the initial repairs to the ramp and the staircase, and that should be cited in the lease, that it was done and by whom. Because we don't want to have any broken hearts three months from now, that, well, you said you were going to do it, and whatever.
Bullet points.
What's that?
Bullet points.
Yeah, these are easy things to resolve. I mean, excuse me, they're not, they're easy things to write down, not easy to resolve. You've got to make that decision.
So we do a two-year?
Don't look at me.
I know, I'm just saying, talking to the room. If it'll make people happy with a two-year lease with the renewal, I think that would, that would be fine with me. And I honestly don't think, I've rented when I was younger, and the landlord always paid for repairs. That's something that's just like a deviation from most normal leases, true.
Well, I can't speak for every lease that we've ever done, but-
I'm not asking in general.
Yeah, the substantial repairs, you know, inside, the inside walls, that's usually the tenant, exterior is the landlord.
Right.
You know, anything that, anything caused by the negligence of the tenant, which is in here, would be the tenant's responsibility.
I mean, in a way, do we kind of like move into 2014, or do we want to stay back at 1970?
Can we fill in the blanks?
Excuse me, can I jump in on the conversation?
I don't care, I just must not. Are we going to take a step as a town, or are we not?
I'm going to recognize one more per, go ahead, Ron.
Ron Siena, 58, David Lane. First off, I want to say, I am in favor of the food pantry, and nobody in North Branford should go to bed hungry. That being said, I've been sitting in the back of the room, listening about costs of ramps and lighting and no parking. Has anyone ever suggested moving the food pantry from an antiquated building, which is over 100 years old, and we all know is going to be a money pit, to Stanley T., where the senior citizens are? It's a modern building, it has ramps, it has lighting, it has parking.
And where, there is no room.
Between the BOE and the rec department, who you, you know.
Okay, now-
I think I walk in cooler.
Come on, let's, let's be reasonable here. There are offices in that building almost as large as this room. I don't think a town employee would feel good about saying, "Hey, I need all this room," and there are people going to bed hungry. We should look at that building, there's no reason to have offices as big as this room for one person, when there's, when we're fighting over ramps that are costing the taxpayers money. Yeah. Did we really look at it as a modern building? The senior citizens are there, the ramps are there, the lighting, it's in Norfolk, Wallingford Electric. The electric is half, as opposed to retrofitting a historical building.
Well, if we're not going to use the building, we should just kind of like bulldoze it, because it's really not working.
Okay, we're talking money here.
Right.
But that's, that's not the option.
And we're talking access for the senior citizens.
It's an option, because I don't think we can take those offices, to be honest with you.
All the rooms are-
It's a town building.
I mean, park and work.
These are town employees. They work for you.
Because-
You know?
I don't know about the BOE.
Oh, so the BOE doesn't report to the town council?
Well, the BOE is kind of a separate entity, money-wise and everything else-wise.
It's a town building. Who specifies the size of offices?
I guess they did when they moved in, because they were the first ones that got in there.
So basically, you're telling me there's nothing you can do?
I have no idea. We should ask that guy right there, since he's the town attorney.
The town owns the building.
The town owns the building.
Yeah.
It covers everything that the pantry needs: ramps, access, lighting, security. Yet we're talking about spending money to retrofit a historical building, when there's no need.
I think you have to address that to the council. I don't know what they've decided to do or not.
I just threw it to you, and you're throwing it back.
I'm just telling you, the legal status of the building.
All right. You want to talk? All right.
And, and better than that, the food pantry could hit the ground running. They don't have to wait for work to be done, just allocate an old classroom to them.
Thank you for, thank you, Ron, for your idea. Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, Liz. Yeah, I know, so this Liz, oh, okay.
Harry Juniver, Turnpike Road, North Branford. You have no parking to speak of there. Right up the road, six to 800 feet, you've got an empty building, you don't need a ramp, you've got the Old Town Hall, you've got plenty of parking. This seems like one hell of a big expense to get this going in the Old Town, the Old Hall there, where the Old Town Hall would be pretty easy, I would think.
Thank you. All right, one more.
I'll try to be, I'm in a strong suit, but I'll try. Elizabeth Kaplan, Old Post Road, Norfolk. I'm sort of representing the Friends of the Libraries, and again, I want to thank you for your allowing us to use that space in the front of the building. And, you know, for the last 10 years, the Friends of the Libraries have raised about $30,000 for the libraries, and that includes adult children's programming, large print books, books on tape. And what we've tried to do, a small organization, we've tried to raise money to help offset the budget for the towns' libraries. And, and I think we've done it in a small way, but at least we've helped a little bit. And we've always looked for space to sort our books for our big book sale that we have every June, and for years, we used Center School until it became an issue last year, where there were little critters running in and out as we were sorting. Anyway, it didn't really work out, and it's a building that has not been, you know, great for us to use, but we used it. And then we started talking, where could we find a space in town where we, a small space, but we could sort our books and sell our books, so we could supplement the budget even more and grow our organization, and not just have that one book sale. And then the idea came up with North Branford Hall. And then during the time when we were doing our book sorting, and at the end, you know, Lynn came up with this idea, this brilliant idea of having a food pantry in that building being a very viable entity for that to happen. And then we have had many conversations about how wonderful it would be to share that space, because we talked logistics, we talked about the hours coinciding, so no one had to be in the building by themselves, you know, because initially, when we thought as the Friends of the Library, we'd be, there'd be two people there by themselves on Route 80 in an evening, winter evening, you know, that's a little scary. But then, when the idea of the food pantry came in, it was like, this is wonderful. This is a wonderful opportunity. And no disrespect to the current food pantries, I've donated to the food pantry, it's on my road, but there comes a time when needs, and you folks have been the first ones to say, there are people in town who are going through foreclosure. Vinny, I don't agree with you often, but you've said it over and over again, and I agree with you. You know, and, and there are, and there are people, needs. She has the statistics, that there's a greater need than what we're able to provide. And, and they're willing to put sweat equity into, you know, helping the people of this town. And same with the libraries, you know, we want people to be educated, we want people to have, you know, books to read in a nominal, for nominal amount of money, but ultimately to help our libraries, so we can grow those free services that we offer people in this town. So dovetailing together makes a lot of sense. It's a great building, it's a historical building, and yes, Joe, you know, I don't always agree with you either, but I know there's always, there's good thoughts behind what you have to say. And I totally understand what you're saying about you don't want this to grow into a behemoth to this town. And the bottom line of it is, tonight, you need to take a vote, whether to go forward or not. But I just feel what has been presented to you from their perspective, and I've listened to it, I haven't been able to come to all the meetings, is that there is a great need here. And you yourselves know that there's a need beyond what we're able, the capacity that we're able to fill now. And you need to balance between the needs of the town fiscally and the needs of the town, everybody does need to eat. And my thought is, well, if people can have food on the table, maybe that's one less worry, and yes, this is sort of an emotional appeal argument, maybe that would give them more ability to go out and find a job, because they're not worried about putting so much food on the table. That's one less expense that they have to deal with, and maybe they can pay some of their back taxes, because that's one less food expense that they may have to pay. I'm just throwing ideas out there that may or may not be true. And I just, it's, it's something I really think you guys need to think long and hard about and consider, and letting it go forward for more than a year lease, because I don't think that would be enough time for them to be up and running and truly have some, you know, bottom-line numbers for you. And you have these companies that are willing to replace the oil tank, willing to do the goods and services up, you know, it sounds like whatever's being met, the town only has to do the railings and come up with an architectural plan, they have everything else done, so there's like your $30,000 pretty much right then and there. So think about it. I hope that you'll go forward with it. I do hope the Friends of the Library will find a home in that building, sharing that space with the food pantry. And I hope we can, that can be a very vibrant thing for this town. And I think it will all work out. We have a wonderful fundraiser here. She's proven it, and the money she's given back to this, that Matt's mission, out of tragedy, has come a lot of good. And I think you have someone that has a proven track record that can fundraise if need be. I mean, out of bat of an eye, she got people to donate, you know, an oil tank and this and that. So I think you've got a win-win situation here. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so let's look at this lease, and I guess figure out what we want to do.
All right, so the blanks we have to fill in are the terms, the maintenance cost, under $1,000, that issue.
Right, we got it.
And what's the other issue? Is that it?
You know, I think, I think you have to just decide, how long is the initial term going to be, which is what you've been talking about.
Right.
And then, how many, how long each option, and how many option terms are there going to be. So just, the way this is set up now is, let's just say, for the sake of argument, you were going to do a three-year lease. And there are, the way the lease is written right now, is there's a blank space for the number of renewal terms of three years each. Now, it doesn't have to be three years, but normally, it's the same as the initial term. So you want to, you want to have a set number of renewals for a set period of time, and that most likely will be your initial, same as your initial term. There's a question as to whether or not there's going to be any involvement of the lessee in the significant repairs or replacements. And then the other thing, everything else is just frankly cosmetic. You want to, well, it's not really cosmetic. You want to put in what you're, who's spending for the stairs and the ramps and the railings, whatever, and what, and what that cost is. That just should be recited, because it's, it's a condition for the lease to go forward. Those are the only things. Apparently, parking is not an issue. And all I was saying is perhaps it could be shown on the, some sort of a diagram, but that's not, doesn't seem to be significant. So you're back to where you are. The term, the number of renewals, of additional terms, and the maintenance, I should say, the repair and replacement costs. Obligation.
Can I just ask one question? Fran, any sense how long that temporary repair to the ramp is good for?
How long it lasts?
Yeah, yeah.
Got a year.
It could probably go over, probably between a year and two years. You know, we have to watch it. It really is not a huge, huge deal to repair it temporarily. But to bring it back up to code is another subject. And that wouldn't even, it's something we got to do any time. Just one more thing, and I think it should be on the town's terms.
Well, that's what I was trying to say before, Fran, is that I think it's better for the town to handle the ramp, just because-
We would take those actions. It needs to be on our terms.
Right, exactly.
I get, old Frankie gets sued.
Right.
Every month.
Exactly.
If somebody does.
Exactly.
And no matter who does it, it all comes back to the town and to me.
Right.
Every single one.
And it's ironic, nobody on the council can call department heads, but, you know, everything should be going through you.
Correct.
Mr. Mayor, could you have one more speaker? One more thing?
One more.
Okay, just to think about. I'm listening to Harry and Ron, and I'm thinking of the distance between Guilford Line and Durham Line. This is a funny town, there's no center, you know. Somebody'd have to make a round trip of 18 miles or so, some, to some of these things. There's already one in south and one in north. We already have a great building in the south and a great building in the north, which are underutilized and would require no expenses at all.[1790.61] And these needs are being met now. If they're not being met adequately, these could be improved at two locations that are open, in Norfolk and North Branford. And I can see somebody that's kind of poor and needs a meal, going to drive a round trip of 18 miles to get a couple of cans of soup or something. So, why were they in mothballs to begin with? Because we didn't want to continue using the middle school. You know, why is it in mothballs? Because we're waiting for it to fall down or get bulldozed or something. They're in mothballs for a very good reason. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you.
Well, I'm going to make a motion that we go with a two-year lease with two options for renewal, and the maintenance should be on the town.
Two options of two years each, right?
Two years, same as the original.
And I think we need to include in the lease, according to John, is that the town will replace the steps and repair the ramp.
And including...
Those improvements will be paid for by the town.
And we'll get a sketch of the apartment layout too.
Do we need to agree in each of those independently, or are we going to have it as a one?
That's a motion on the floor.
Wait a minute, what was the motion again? A two-year?
Two-year lease with two-year options. The town pays the maintenance on the building, like a landlord is supposed to. And is that all we needed to plug in there?
And the town pays the...
The stairs and the...
Well, the stairs...
The town's going to pay for that.
Right, town's going to pay for the stairs and the $1,000 for the ramp. And the utilities the second year.
The town pays, but it, the maintenance?
The town, yeah, the $1,000 is out of the lease.
Right.
Anything under 1,000, they pay. Anything over 1,000, we pay.
And then what's this about utilities?
Well, utilities, they said the second year, we would, we would pay.
Second year.
Okay, so is the lease going to go until, is it going to run on our fiscal year, or is it going to run based on when we started and going through? Because I think that needs to be specified, because what are we talking, first year, second year, on the lease?
Set up now to run your fiscal year.
So... So, the first lease would actually end then in 2016?
Yes.
June of 2016. So it would be actually less than two years.
Yeah, and I think it's, it goes without saying that if there is an option with regard to the utilities, the town only, the tenant only pays utilities in the very first year of the term. It doesn't, when you renew the term for two years, the tenant doesn't go back and pay the first year of utilities. This is just a starter thing.
So they're going to pay utilities to June 30th of 2015?
Right.
That's, right, it's not the year.
Under the motion on the floor, whose option is it at the end of the first two year?
The tenant.
The tenant.
The tenant owner.
Yes.
So the town is theoretically committing to a six-year term.
Yes.
With the obligation to maintain and repair the building for six years.
Well, and you're the funding authority, and as you said...
I just want to be clear.
Yeah, no, the original...
There was a mutual option that could be declined by either party, from some of the earlier discussions.
Right.
Well, in the very beginning, it was, there was no, there was no end to this term. It would go on and on and on and on. So we, so we put in a cap on the number of options, or suggested, and you're, you're talking about two now. So, frankly...
Second year on.
Two, two-year options.
Two-year options.
When added to an initial two-year term, is the equivalent of the three years that they wanted in the first place and one-year, three-year, and one three-year option. But we would be back, you know, it's typical, I think, Joe, for the, for the tenant to have an option in the lease, and for the tenant to exercise the option. Not, not the, now, there's, there are several paragraphs here that describe obligations that the tenant must endure and provide, and if it doesn't, that's a breach of the lease. And there's another provision that says, we can terminate the lease if there's, if they don't fulfill their conditions. But if everything goes normally, they would be the only ones exercising the option in this particular motion, and for these, for this particular term.
Excuse me, would you feel better if we took one of the renewals off? So now you're really talking four years. I mean, four years, we should have a good track record, we should be able to see. And there's one thing that I want to say that's been bugging me all night long, and that is food. No one here has thought about food. We already have $32,000, that does not include food. Our fundraising, and we're going to have to work really, really hard this year, is to raise a lot of money because how quick does food go? If this is as busy as I think it's going to be, we're going to need a lot of, raise a lot of money for food.
You want to know what? Have you ever gone to the food drives and been around the Boy Scouts, the Women's Club? They do raise a lot of food. So, you know, it bothers me tonight to hear people talking negatively about our food banks, because they've done a wonderful job for many years, many years. And, and, and again, I'm not knocking you or anyone in this room, but, you know, as an elected official, you know, people put their trust in myself and these other eight people up here, and everyone up here is agonized over this, believe me. It's not that we're stalling, it's not that we're trying to hide or buy time. We have to look at 16,000 people, and that's why Joe is so passionate about it. I've probably lost the two weeks of sleep and hours at work over this. The whole town is pretty much stopped over this. And, you know, I know Al, Don, all of us, Marie, everyone up here has talked and talked about this. But, so people in our town help each other, they always have, and you know that, you've proved it. And I know there's people out there every day that are giving, and there, there is a need. I just don't know that it's as big as we think it is. That's where I think a lot of us are having the trouble.
So if we take one of the options off, and now you're talking four years, then we'll see. I mean, I think you're right. I think a lot of us don't really know.
Exactly.
But I do know that for those who do, are in need, I think it's far better to be able to provide milk and eggs and meat and cheese and all the things. I mean, to, you know, I think that, I think the town has grown in regards to need, I do believe that, and I don't really think that it's sustaining itself properly. I'm not trying to disrespect anyone for all the work that they've done.
And you want to know what? When you said that to me about the eggs, the milk and everything, I got eight calls from a bunch of different people, businesses, that said, Anthony, now you're going to hurt my business because these people, and I'm saying, you know, so I'm hearing every different side of this. And, and that's, it's a reality, it's a reality. And, and people have said to me, I can't give anymore. I've been given, you know, given and given, now there's going to be another thing I have to give to. So...
That's why you need the Connecticut Food Bank.
And, yeah.
So that you can raise money and go buy what you need, because people can't give anymore. That's the point of all of this.
And the 11 to 14 cents, you know, it's an administrative fee, basically, you're not really buying the food. And, I mean, I did tons of homework on this, I know exactly what you're talking about, I have it all right here.
Well...
I'd like to amend my, my motion to one-two-year term with one-two-year renewal.
Is it still at the end of the four years, the option of the tenant, is that, is that still a way?
No, after that, it's, it's an open lease, we have to redo it.
You got to, no.
Right.
All right, now you're going to have to redo this, one-two-year.
So at the end of two, it's their option, at the end of four, it's anybody's option.
Right, right.
Well, we, we can renegotiate the lease.
Right.
Because I actually have a feeling that the churches will still continue, you know, doing what they do, because, you know, they, they will.
Can I have one moment, please? I'm Michelle Nelson. I am a board member of the Norfolk Women's Club. I just came from their board director's meeting tonight, and our whole team is completely behind this. We have donated money to both pantries. We've worked both pantries. And from what we talked about tonight, they are not sufficient. And I came from a larger town, I moved up here from Norwalk, so I know what the need is, I've seen it, I've worked with a lot of different food pantries because of my background. And I think this is a fantastic, fantastic project. I think that there's a lot more need in our town than we're actually able to get our head around. There always is, because there are people who you don't know that are ashamed to go to a food pantry. And in discussing, I was in a meeting tonight for two hours, and half of our meeting was talking about this food pantry and how fantastic it's going to be. I don't think there is any reason to not go forward with this. I understand, I've been at all these meetings, or I missed one. I've been at most of the meetings, and I understand financial budget, I understand the court process, I've, you know, I worked a lot in legal for 10 years, and it's just, I can't tell you how much this town would benefit from this. That's all I wanted to say.
All right, thank you.
Well, that sounds more, a lot more reasonable, two years. I mean, a four-year commitment is much more reasonable than a six-year commitment, regardless of how it goes forward or not.
You just need a second, right?
I'll second.
Can I ask a discussion? Because I'm not sure of the motion, to be honest with you.
I understand the motion to be a two-year lease with a two-year option to renew, with the tenant's option, that the repairs, with the first $1,000 being paid by the tenant being removed, and the town is fully responsible for all capital improvements and annual maintenance after the first year for utilities and whatever else needs, the building needs. So we're committing to four years of funding this operation, keeping that building up, functioning, and having a good repair. That's how I understand it.
And we don't know the number.
Is that your understanding, John?
Yes, I think that fairly summarizes it.
So my question was, we've got our two illustrious attorneys that have been working on this lease forever, and when we came in here tonight, the two of you didn't agree. So, is what they just said, do you agree with that now, and you agree with that?
Those were open items.
Option.
You're filling in open items. There's about, this is, everything else has been agreed to, and the only, the only question was, who pays for all of the repairs? That was never agreed to, so it was open, so we're filling in that blank tonight, and the term is being filled in tonight.
So everything else is agreed on?
Everything else is agreed on, and I thought that Joe summarized it pretty well. I mean, actually, you should check with Vinnie, is that a fair statement?
Correct.
He's the...
I thought you two agreed.
See that? Don't try and kiss me now.
Joe, this is a two-year lease, two-year option by the town to renew. Town pays all repairs, utilities, the second year.
So just so I'm clear, in two years, the town can't get out of it?
Right.
No.
It's four.
Four. Just so everybody's on the same page, what I was proposing was shifting the cost of maintaining and operating the building to the town, but giving them a shorter term so that if we did not fund it, if it was not in budget, or we insufficiently budgeted to fund the operation, they had the option not to renew. They think that doesn't work for them. So, what we're asked, being asked to commit to is four years of funding operations and costs of maintaining that building. That's the unknown in my mind.
So, when I started my business with $1,000, and that was 25 years ago. It's people, it's their heart that build things.
Question, just because we had agreed upon, we had voted independently on one of the other options on the, on the lease, whether the floor plan, we've been agreed with that. Are we voting for these amendments to the lease, and then we're going to vote on the lease? Or are we going to...
No, this is, this is it.
This is it.
We are voting now.
This is too painful, put it all together.
This is it.
We voted for the floor plan last time, and that's an attachment to this lease.
So what we're voting for now is that if we're going to go ahead with it or not, basically?
Correct.
This is it. Yes or no?
This is a yes.
Oka.
All right, so you have two-year, two-year lease, two-year option. Town pays repairs. Utilities are approximately 12,000 to 14,000.
Wake me up already.
Around $60,000 in repairs, 12 to 14,000.
I know. Yeah. Let you do it. Yeah, right? Yeah, well, whatever.
So you're probably looking at 28,000. 88,000. And, you know, I'm trying to figure out one thing. And I agree with the all structural here. So this becomes the town's. Worst-case scenario.
Hey, Ann, can we turn that thermostat down a couple degrees? I sweat enough in my restaurant. A little bit, a lot of people in there. Thank you very much.
Yeah, the worst-case scenario is 84.
If it's cold. You need a beating or what?
We're going to freeze you now.
One other, Mr. Mayor, Anthony, just before you call, before you call the vote, just thinking, one other additional item?
Wait a minute. Please, please, everyone?
You're going to want to make this contingent, right, upon the organization getting its 501(c)(3) status, right?
Yeah. Right.
Okay.
They have to get that in order to work with the food bank. Didn't you get the memo?
No, I got, I mean, I know that, but you're saying it's...
Roll it into the motion?
It was part of a, yeah, you could, if you wanted to roll it into the motion, then...
Don't get the 501(c)(3), the only thing you can do with that is lose it by abusing tax exempt status.
I mean, I got everything right here. It's a two-year lease, two-year option by the town, town paying me, utilities second year. Freaking money, sir. Any other questions? Any other questions? Roll call.
Yep.
You ready? Anybody have any further questions?
No, we're ready to vote.
Let's rock and roll, dude.
No further questions? Nope. All right, roll call. Great anxiety. I'm going to have to vote now.
Deputy Mayor Whitworth?
No.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Caprio?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
No.
Counselor Fawnin?
No.
Counselor Pacey?
No.
Counselor Hudson?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
No.
Official votes? Six.
Five.
Three, six. Six, three.
Well, three, four, six again.
All right, move on to C-Met. Okay.
We are, we are, we are the oldest towns surrounding town, not connected, connected to the food bank or have vital food banks. It is so shameful. So shameful.
Michael, report on C-Met.
Uh, yes. We had a meeting on the 26th, and I've included the draft of the minutes, just because it was, it's a long meeting. And the nuts and bolts of it are that the organization is still, um, still going through negotiations with Yale to bring them in as a membership. New Haven is still in, West Haven is still in, Hampton is still in, is still a viable organization. And probably could still have life, depending on where, where Yale comes in or comes out, in terms of its membership. So that is still out. They had extended the withdrawal, as I put in my notes there, to June 30th, 2015, in terms of notifications. So this is still very much a fluid situation. And I'll keep, continue to report as these meetings unfold. Has anybody heard that or not?
No, I doubt it.
I think basically what you said was, everything's still up in the air and we don't know the damn thing.
Right.
I'd feel next.
But the big, the big three are still in, and so it's still viable organization at this point. The 30% reduction in terms of the budgeting operation has been reduced. So the numbers going forward will be reduced for our, for our share. The big, big thing is going to be whether Yale comes in or not. And if we hold the big, if we hold the big three...
Doesn't it sound like it's going to do it?
Potentially, yeah. It looks promising.
Mary didn't laugh about it already, right?
Mary's out, correct.
We still have a meeting going on. Could you please go in the hallway? I'm sorry. We're in your way. Go ahead, Michael.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll report back at the...
New business discussion in action. Police commission, review of vehicle and possible purchase.
Yeah, this is, it's more informational for you tonight. The, the police commission's going to meet next week. But the, the, there was an, an incident that triggered this whole discussion with respect. I'll send around some photos. This is the police chief's car caught on fire a couple of weeks ago. Burned through the, I guess the catalytic converter had overheated and burned through. And so his, his car's out of commission. As you know, the other car was in, another cruiser was involved in an accident. So it's out of commission. They're looking to basically, the commission will have a meeting, have a recommendation to come back. But I wanted to give you, give you some information on the memo that Lieutenant Ripa had provided. So that you're, you're ready when they make, come at, I guess, the next meeting to potentially make a recommendation as to how they want to finance the replacement of the car. Because if you remember, there's one, there's 35,000 in the, in the capital for a new cruiser. But the price tag is going to be about, I think, 41. So they're short there. And on the insurance check back for the cruiser that was totaled, you're only going to get about 29,000 on that from the insurance, so...
Was that the one that cracked up at Cumberland?
Yes. Right.
Do you know when that meeting is, the commission?
Um...
It's the regular schedule.
Is it, is it next week, next Monday?
Yeah, next, yeah.
Maybe the second Monday?
I think it's, I think you're right. I think it's next Monday.
So what is the projected shortfall in the cars?
I, I think the projected shortfall is going to be somewhere between, close to 45,000, I believe. If they're, if you look, depending on how you, you look at this and what their recommendation is going to be, if they want to go, try to go for three vehicles to replace.
45,000 inclusive of what we've budgeted for capital or in addition to?
In addition to. Depending on how they...
Thirty-five thousand and forty-five?
Just, I'm just...
Really funny. I mean, that can't be possible.
Wait a minute. Michael, aren't we, the insurance company's paying like 29?
Right.
Okay?
For the car that cracked up.
Okay.
Okay. Then we haven't replaced Sergeant Flanagan's position. So there's about 12,000 or 13,000 in the 101 account?
Right. To address Joe's question, there's, there's three different items. You gave him 35 in this year's budget to replace a car.
Right.
That's not going to be enough. There's a shortfall, say, $3,000 to $4,000. You have Matt's car, which supposedly is, needs to be replaced. They're going with a lesser model, that's 24,000. It's now about 30, roughly. And then on the car that was totaled, the problem is that model, it was a Crown Vic. So you're getting about 29, as the mayor alluded to, you're about $20,000 gap, because you have to outfit a whole new car now. You can't, no, you can't transfer the items from Plan A to Plan B. So in total, you're about $50,000 short to do all three of those items. On top of the 35 you gave him currently.
So basically, we need one car...
If you gave him everything they want.
Regular car, just needs a radio, no outfit, which we could probably go on the lower side.
Right, so 24 is what the, that's Matt's replacement.
And then we need a patrol car, or actually, two patrol cars.
Right. You gave him 35 towards one patrol car. And what Gary's telling you, the lowest number is about 36.5. So say 2,000 to $3,000, sake of argument there, you're short on that one. So you've got Matt's car, about 24, you're short. The big number is you're short 20 on the totaled car. Because you're going from a Crown Vic to a different vehicle.
All right, so your premise is we're buying them a car, which we were doing anyway, plus we're replacing these two cars. So we're in effect going out for three cars.
That is correct.
And that's why it's $80,000.
That is correct.
What's the, what's the...
Why are we going out for three cars?
We have to wait for them to come back.
Do we have any leased cars now?
You could certainly do that, too. You could take, you could take the 30...
Yeah.
Right, you could take the 30, the 35,000 you have in the budget and use that towards a lease payment if you'd like to.
Wouldn't it be cheaper if we leased another one?
It would, but we decided we wanted to buy. That was when we were dealing with one car.
Oh.
Right.
And now we got three.
Right.
But now, is there money?
Why can't the chief take one of the other cars?
Well, he, he would take 11, but 11, I'm sorry, yeah, car 11 is the '03 Ford Explorer. And that one is...
The transmission or something.
Yeah, that one's shot and it's got to be junked as well. I mean, it's 174,000 miles, it's probably...
We're not talking about putting the chief in a new car. He always takes an older car, because he's, he's not, he works all the time.
That's not, that's not a true statement.
It's not a true statement.
No. The chief's car was bought specifically for the chief when it was bought new. And so is that's part of that $50,000, is that $24,000 number is to buy a, not a Crown Vic, I forgot what model they, they said it was in there, but it's for...
Was it Taurus?
Uh, correct.
Anthony, weren't we buying the SUVs, like they refer to them as the Interceptor or something?
Correct.
And we got to kind of stay along the line of the same model and type of car. Because I kind of talked to the Public Works mechanic and whatnot, and he's saying, you know, it's a lot easier to repair, swap parts.
Certainly.
So if we could stay along the lines of the Interceptor...
That's what they're going for.
What do you mean Escape?
Uh, it's like a Ford Escape, basically, right?
Is that what we're talking about?
Well, it's more like a, what's the Interceptor now? What's the old model?
Yeah.
Taurus?
No, 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 no. Taurus is Matt's car.
Right.
Matt's is a separate issue.
Okay.
The SUVs that were... The SUV, yeah.
Yeah, the SUV, they call it Interceptor or something.
Yeah, Interceptor, I'm trying to think what their model, not the Explorer, Expedition, I forget what it was. Expedition.
Yeah, the Range.
Oh, so it's the Explorer, the bigger one?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's a four-wheel drive, you know, for the snow and everything else. But that kind of opens the conversation to a whole different topic about the whole CIP, the fact we haven't adopted it. You heard Don and Bill Chody allude earlier in the night that they're going to need closer to 90-odd thousand dollars for the track project, and you gave them 60-odd thousand dollars. So if we can get the response back from the police department, I think you're going to hear it from the fire chief shortly, he's in a similar situation regarding the tanker truck you gave him. So there's three different items that, at the time the budget was created, the estimate was one number. And then now, as time has elapsed, the number's going to be a different number. I still haven't got a firm answer on the girl from the state with the audit. And she's getting, hopefully to the end, she's been transferred from the Department of Education now, they're flying under DAS. It's a whole different set of parameters and everything else. But we're going to get that resolved, hopefully. My thought was, we have cash on hand. So when we revise the CIP and finalize the CIP, that's your opportunity to solve these three different issues. Bump up the board of ed to the number they need for the track. Put the 50-odd thousand dollars in here, whatever the final number is, to solve the police issues. And then the chief's going to talk to you about the tanker shortly as well. You have an opportunity to solve all three of those with cash on hand. You know, could you lease them? You certainly could. Take the 35,000 you have now for the police and lease the three cars. Then you're time, you're spending interest you don't need to spend. We have cash on hand today. So avoid the interest costs, avoid all the aggravation, just buy them cash outright.
How many policemen can we employ?
How many policemen? Twenty-two.
Twenty-two?
Twenty-two plus the chief?
Twenty-two patrol officers, I believe it is, yeah. Plus the chief and the lieutenant.
Twenty-three, and we got 15 cars. We're getting rid of, one got burned, one is a junk.
And one was totaled.
One was totaled. So we're down to 12 cars, which is one car for every two men.
And then a motorcycle.
Forget the motorcycle. I mean, that, that isn't even funny anymore. What are we doing? Some of these cars have to be sitting in the parking lot. I mean, we don't have 15 policemen on any one shift.
That's correct. Well, they, they rotate them various times. And there's the detective, has, has, there's two detective cars. Matt's got a car, lieutenant's got a car. There's one they use to go to court every day. The records guy goes to court every day. I don't know the exact breakdown, I could look at the list, how many are actually patrolled.
I used to see a car all the time. I don't rotate it. I mean, come on, what are we talking about? Why do we have to buy a $25,000 car for the chief? I mean, all due respect to the chief, he needs to get around. But he can't use one of these cars? He's going to spend $25,000 to buy him a new one? All right, that's a rhetorical question. You don't have to...
Let's wait and see what the police commission comes back to us with.
That's exactly right.
And see what their idea is.
Spend money like we make it.
Ringling Brothers Barn and Bailey.
And we have a septic tank issue that we haven't even really talked about at the police station. That could be potentially $100,000.
What happens with that? So at the moment, we don't have to do anything with the...
There was a...
Well, as manager alluded to, the balls in the court of the police commission, they're going to make a recommendation to you folks, come back at the next meeting, and we can talk about it then, amend the CIP, and then put it to bed.
Move on, right?
Right.
Move on.
We just wanted you to be aware. And also, just to throw in there, while under police, we do have to look at the septic system, because it backed up into the building again. And it costs us quite a bit of money, replaced gear and everything else.
No sense of putting a system in that building?
Well, it's actually a pipe. It's not the whole septic, septic's fine.
The system's not like the pipe gets to it.
Because it's under the concrete going into the locker room.
So they got a, this is an interior pipe drilling up?
Yeah. It's an inside pipe inside the building.
Okay.
All right. Item B, Public Works, appoint Bob Grimm as deputy tree warden.
I'd like to move the motion to appoint Robert Grimm as deputy tree warden, since he has his arborist license and meets all the requirements.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Counselor Hodgson?
Hodgson.
Hodgson?
Hodgson.
Hodgson. Roll call.
Are you sure?
I'm letting my whole name, my life is from that name.
I'm working hard on that. Roll call?
Senator Hillora?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Caprio?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Pacey?
Yes.
Counselor Hudson?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Public Work Capital Request.
Can you just go over this a little bit, Franny, just real quick? I mean, it's pretty cut and dry.
The John Deere 4400, how big is that tractor?
Small.
It's a small tractor?
Yeah. That's going to be for using for the sidewalks.
Oh, so it's, it's like, what, a 20-horse or something?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
This is coming out of the 25,000, right, that we allocated?
This is the first round of the couple. This is stuff that, I remember at the 25,000, the stuff that we didn't have.
Right.
That we kind of...
Right.
We just had a, we just had a stall the other day, which is not on the list, so they see it much. But the stall, John, it's not a tractor, again, it's just a snow blower. It's an attachment toward the tractor.
Right.
And the reason we're getting that is mostly for some of the parking lots that we have, really for the sidewalks that we have to maintain until we sell the property. That whole corner, all the way down and all the way past the bridge is a little spot for the thing. So because the state's going to put the snow on, we're going to have to throw it over, or burn it off, we're not going to be able to use really snow pile. More efficient to just throw it up and over.
So I'm just curious, when the state, when the state does a project like Route 80 and they put sidewalks in, then you own them?
No. Thank you.
Uncle Franny, I like that.
Well, the property owner has to hear.
Right, right.
The central plaza.
And how cool is that? You have to clear sidewalks to nowhere.
Yes. So... Or I could sue you. Get you to put the wall. Need catches just for one of the smaller, we tried to get that for three years. The walk behind Mall, I hate to say this, but every path we take is made one more block, we're down to one Mall. So I already did the path purchase. The safety cones, we, we have like no cones left, so... The last set of cones we got because of chief, we got it through a grant through Homeland Security, so we got to get 200 cones, but that was five or six, seven years ago. So there's a need for that. And then just two small, small snow blows for walkways.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the request from Public Works for his capital.
I'll second that.
Moved by Counselor...
What was the other item? You're not ready to present it?
Well, I could present it tonight if you wanted to. I think it's a demolition saw that's a thousand dollars.
Okay, sure. I'll amend the motion so that it'll be 16,700, the addition of a demolition saw.
All right, that was moved by Counselor Angeloni.
Second. My second.
Okay, second by Counselor Diamond. She looked like she was going to hit me. Roll call?
Senator Hillora?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Caprio?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Oh, yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Pacey?
Yes.
Counselor Hudson?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
D, Financial Transfers.
What's 1,500 for technical equipment under the PD?
On the first page, the trees.
Bottom of it.
All the way down to the bottom.
Right. Technical equipment doesn't tell us much.
In your package, in your folder tonight, you have a revised sheet that has more detail.
Yeah, that's right.
What it was, was they short, they shorted the amount of E-ticket modules they needed. They shorted one car when they did their budget last year. They needed a new booking camera, and they needed a new SWAT rifle.
A new what?
SWAT.
To go with the tank.
Why, the old ARs are no good?
I do not know. I just know they can't.
Not start having a new SWAT rifle.
Uh, okay.
Pretty expensive to get flies.
I, I, I don't know. I think I want a little more clarification on that.
The SWAT rifle?
I need a SWAT rifle.
Yeah, I mean, what's the need for a new SWAT?
It's okay. Good evening. Just kind of as an FYI to the town council, just like the town council, the Board of Fire Commissioners doesn't meet over the summertime, so our first meeting is Thursday night to kind of get back into the swing of things. And in fiscal, this fiscal year, the town council was gracious enough to provide us with funding for a tanker for Company 3. And based upon preliminary investigation and working with a vendor at that time, which was, which we thought was very reputable, the $250,000 was appropriate, would more than suit our needs. On August 1st, we received information that the vendor that we had been working with was going out of the tanker business and was no longer making tankers. So the reduced cost kind of baffled us at that time. We, we had been working aggressively with the specifications and as, as you know, to specify a fire apparatus, even though we're kind of using the KISS method, keep it simple stupid, with the tanker and trying to reduce the cost, still putting a set of specifications together takes time. So indeed, we've enlisted the help of a few other vendors, so we're getting ballpark figures that range up to about $300,000. So we may, again, depending upon how we put the RFP together and what the bids come in on, be short the difference between 250 and, and $300,000. We're going to work more aggressively with a couple other vendors and, and see what we can do. So that'll be brought up at the commission's meeting Thursday night this week. The, the next item that I'll kind of give you a heads up with is the fact that we've gone to the application process for the ambulance and we've witnessed that we have indeed taken more money in, in last fiscal year than previously anticipated. So we're hoping next year, when we come back in, that we may see somewhat of reduced costs.
Okay.
So it's working pretty good. Okay, thank you.
Well, chief, now the tankers, I know Guilford bought them, they're upwards of 475, 500.
Guilford is buying two. I don't know where they get their money.
Right.
But they're buying two tankers right now that the total combined cost is about $970,000. They don't, they go top shelf all the time.
Not us, we're mid-shelf.
I'm sorry?
We're mid-shelf.
Uh, yeah, exactly. So, thank you.
Alright, thank you.
I just have to ask, we didn't give that company any money, right?
Yes.
Okay. I figured you would have told us.
Alright. Are there any other citizen statements and petitions? Having none, going to executive session?
Make a motion that we move into executive session to include the town attorney...
I got to go to the boys room.
I think that's it.
Second. Second, okay, Jim?
I'm on favor. Bye.
Bye.